Restart the meeting, but this is the March 24th, 2025 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. This meeting is occurring down at beautiful Town Hall. It is being recorded, is available on Zoom. And you can get that link from our agenda on the Town website. You can call in or view it from there. I mean, or view it in Zoom. Either way, or you can come on down to Town Hall. We are beginning this meeting earlier than usual because of the next upcoming motion. I would be looking for a motion to enter into executive session and to reenter, then to reenter into open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30, Section 21a3, "To discuss strategy with respect to deliberation in a public hearing if an open meeting may have detrimental effect." So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. That requires a roll call vote. So I will go down the line. Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Amanda, I'm suddenly blanking on your last name.
Mrs. Reed, aye.
Reed, thank you. I'm so sorry, Mrs. Mr. Willsner?
Aye.
And an aye from myself. We're going to go into executive session. If any public that is in the room, please get the heck out. With love.
You have more than half an hour if you want. If you're having fun.
Yep.
I'll be downstairs.
Let me call up. Okay, good evening, everyone. I did formally open the meeting back at 5:30, but I'm still going to say the opening should be able to make sure everyone's aware, where I say, "Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 24, 2025 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board." Thank you. Thank everyone here for joining us. If you are watching us online or on TV, you can always tap in through Zoom. That is getting set up right now, so we'll... Great, there's people inside, wonderful. So if you want to, if you're at home and want to chime in, you know, check the town website for the agenda, use a Zoom link, you can call in, all the usuals. We are here at, like, I think I said, well, upstairs at Town Hall, but in case I didn't, we are, and we are being recorded. Thank you, everyone. And is there anyone who wishes to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a lot of exciting, exciting public hearings, A and R before us tonight, but we'll open up, as always, with a call for public comment. And if you're attending in Zoom, go ahead and use that hand raised feature tonight if you want to be heard for public comment. Excuse me, hearing none? Excuse me. I am gonna, I am gonna apologize. Cold, wet weather makes it slightly harder for me to speak clearly, so if you have trouble, if I'm speaking fine for you, wonderful. If I slur a little bit and you need me to clarify, go ahead, not a problem, just ask me to repeat myself, not an issue. Okay, gonna move on first to the A and R for 171 Arbor Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Brian Marshetti here, McCarthy Engineering, here on behalf of P S and G Realty, 393 435 LLC. This is the piece of property off of Arbor Street that I've been before you now the last year or so to get this all worked out. We started out as a subdivision. We've, because of the priority habitat for the Blending Turtle on the property, we've revised us back down to a three-lot common driveway. The common drive permit's been approved, notice of intent's been approved. We had to modify a lot line on an adjacent property. We did a little land trade with them in order to make this, to give us enough frontage for three common dri, for three common driveway lots through, on the property. So we just worked out the final details with National Heritage Danger Species Program, so now this plan reflects the division of the property and the areas on the property that are going to be monumented, which you can see through here, which were the agreements with DSHAP for protection of the priority habitat laying in the back. So we're here tonight just to ask for the revision of these lot lines, and that's it, and we're gonna start construction.
Great. Looks like two reduced frontage lots next to each other, flanked by full frontage lots. That meets our requirement for the reduced and full, and full frontage. All right. Do we have any questions from the board at this point? Hearing none. I've, I'm just doubled, I haven't looked at the topos recently. I wanted to look at those quickly. Yep. All right. Are there any comment or questions about, about 171 Arbor Street for the A and R?
None for me.
Okay. We could look for a mo, I could be looking for a motion to endorse the A and R for 171 Arbor Street, if we're comfortable with it.
So moved.
Uh, second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All set, and we got the Mylar, right?
You got it signed?
Get that signed for you.
Okay.
Perfect. We can sign others for our records later. Today is the, I know I already said it, 24th?
I don't have a second Mylar here. I don't know if, this is just the one focus on lot two?
No, the property was so big.
I got a second Sharpie right here, so we can get that going down without waiting. So there's a notation on that plan, that it's part of that plan?
Yes.
She wanted two.
She wanted two and two, okay. Thanks. Thank you. Great. Moving us on, we have several public hearings tonight. Next up would be 494 Electric Ave.
Evening folks, Attorney Avini for the applicant. I think we're here tonight to review the draft decisions. The planner and I have exchanged some emails about some verbiage on two particular provisions that I had some concerns about, but I think for the most part, we have a pretty comprehensive special permit, and I don't believe there's any questions on the storm water manager permit. So unless the board has any additional questions, I think we can discuss at least the two things that I looked at.
These are the two items that the attorney is referring to. Okay. Petition. Is, are the copies here for each of us? Yes. Okay. So the draft decisions that we've exchanged and agreed upon?
Yes.
Those are in your SharePoint.
Those are in your SharePoint, in the staff report?
Mm-hmm.
And in the decisions folder, and then these are just the two corrections that make perfect sense to me, so.
Right.
We're all in agreement on this side.
Okay. While we're reviewing, I will take a moment and ask if we have a public comment on 494 Electric. Seeing none, none in the Zoom?
Nope.
Okay. Double-checking the work we have for the draft otherwise as well. Regarding the changes that were put forward, what is the appeal period?
The appeal period for, once it's filed, the decision is 20 days.
Okay, fine.
20 days.
Yeah.
20 days.
Okay.
Two zero.
Yep, no, understood. Great.
So just to queue up what you're looking at there, so we exchanged the draft decisions, and they had concerns about these two conditions. And it was mostly about the sequence that would be involved. And so it made perfect sense to sort of swap them so that the proper procedures were followed and followed. The town meeting and the easement that we had discussed and so forth. So as far as a whole draft decision, you recall, we continued to this public hearing for the preparation of that draft decision, and the review by the applicant, that's customary. And there's special conditions I added in there that reflect a lot of the input of the neighborhood and concerns they had over the course of deliberation. So namely, the easement that will be recorded down the road, no pun intended, and some provisions about parking prohibitions, so that people don't park in a butter's parking lots, signage that's requiring that and so forth, a review after six months to look at whether things are working appropriately in terms of internal circulation and safety. And, and that's about it. Six or seven special conditions, nothing really that complicated, and certainly everything that we've deliberated on throughout the public hearing. So that's what I have for you.
Great, thank you.
To the board.
And the highlighted sections who've been given here, is this as they are being disputed or discussed, or is this the version that is?
This is the version that the applicant responded with.
Okay.
The conditions were essentially turned around, and they pointed out sequentially, for this to work, it has to follow this process through town meeting approval. We can't record the easement until such time as town meeting approves, and so all of that was accurate.
Right.
So all of it was, I recommend, were reasonable changes that we should approve.
Okay.
All right, great.
And we do have the technology to shoot this to the screen, but.
Oh, I.
Nobody's asking about particular conditions. If they do, we could do that, but.
I'm, yeah. I'm always happy to throw things on the screen, but by the same token.
Everything we've talked about.
Yep, these are all things we've talked about in meetings, this has been brought up. Again, if you have public comment, even though I haven't said the word "public comment" in a few minutes, you can wave your hand, that's fine. All right. I think. The thing I wish, and this isn't on the applicant, one day. I wish Town Council had gotten back to us, I was gonna say in a timely manner, but largely at all on this, so we could get another opinion, but we don't. At some point, we have to, I am of the opinion we have to act, because how many times are we gonna say, "Give us a response"? That said, I get, I get the logic here as presented, it makes sense to me. I just wish we had heard from Town Council on this more. But things are what they are, and I wish I could feel more confident and go. I feel the need to, personally, I feel the need to go forward with this. I feel these are appropriate. I wish I also had Town Council's feedback. We don't, I'm frustrated, but ultimately, you work with what you have.
Mr. Chair, through you to the board, if it makes you feel any better. We have provisions in our zoning bylaws for situations like this where it's assumed if we don't get feedback or input back from, let's say, department ads or so forth through the application process, that they don't have any concerns.
Mm-hmm.
That they agree with what is proposed. So I think the board would be reasonable to conclude the same thing here. If there was a big issue, we would have heard of it.
I appreciate that, and that's the logic I personally am working under.
Yeah.
I just... I would still rather have heard it directly rather than being forced to assume. But such is life. And again, to be clear, not faulting the applicant, we told the applicant what was needed, it was given to us in a perfectly timely manner.
And we understand that the road will remain completely accessible and open to the neighborhood and anyone else, and the town will continue to maintain it in full, so there are no issues there.
That by and large, this really seems to reflect a situation that is useful if you're looking to do parking across the street for your business, but otherwise, and you own both parcels. And otherwise is largely moot. Other questions or comments from the board at this point?
I just had a question on the retail space. I remember our last meeting, we spoke, there was a question about the definition of a retail space versus, I believe, like, a mall? Did we?
A shopping center.
Shopping center, did we get any?
Right now, they're proposing, as the planner record, the use of the space that does not trigger the shopping center use category definition.
Okay.
So if that changes, they're aware, and they've been notified.
Okay.
You'll have to come back for a modification to the approval. But as of right now, according to what's in the planner record, they are not proposing anything that meets the definition of a shopping center.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have other questions from the board at this point? Comments or anything else?
No, not at this point.
Okay. Are we? We can discuss now, or we can close the public hearing and discuss either way? Just once you close the public hearing, we can't get more feedback? But I don't know how much more we need, we've talked about this for 13,000 years. It's true, last ice sheets were receding when we began this public hearing.
We'll finish it.
All right.
Motion to close public hearing on 494 Electric Avenue.
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. I noticed at the end of the decision it says roll call vote, but we don't need a roll call vote for this because we're in person. Okay, great, I just wanted to make sure.
It's majority.
Yeah, super, I just wanted to make sure. Do we have further discussion? Are we comfortable voting? I mean, I.
As comfortable as we can, basically.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's where I am. All right? Okay, I would look for a motion to, let me make sure I have everything written, I say it correctly. I would look for a motion to approve the site plan review and stormwater management permit for 494 Electric Avenue.
So moved. With standard conditions.
Sorry, with standard conditions and special conditions as has been presented to us and discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, does that motion work?
It does. You normally wouldn't wanna say the date of the plan of record, but I think we're clear on that.
Okay, great.
Everybody knows what it is.
All right. Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. You're all set?
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So we'll get that filed tomorrow.
Very welcome. If we need to in the future, I'm fine with it. I don't think we've included the date on plans of records in our past motions. If you want that, I'm fine, I always need help working that out.
You could just say the plan of record.
On the plan of, okay.
I think you said, you probably said enough, but.
Cool, no, I'm fine with whatever wording works, works. Bam! Out of the way. 213 Electric Avenue, stormwater management permit, this is continued. Or no, this is a continued, we are not. I have not been, I have not been told that any of our public hearings have been requested to be continued tonight, so.
Mr. Chair, I can queue this up for, if it's helpful to the board, through you and the board. We continued this so that Town Peer Reviewer could take a look at it and confirm that there's only one thing that needs to be followed up on, and that's test pit evaluations during construction. And I prepared a draft decision, as we discussed, and that one condition is included as a special condition along with the standard conditions for that draft decision. So that's there in your SharePoint, it's everything that we talked about with the applicant, and everything seems to be in order. We got a final peer review report from Riza Engineering, and they said everything was cohesive.
Yeah, I was reviewing that this afternoon. Great.
And just for the record, Dan Shan with Haley Ward, here on behalf of the applicant.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Great, we've got the peer review letter, it seems to be in order. Further questions from the board?
No, if they've given us what we needed to get, and it's all in order, then it's all in order.
Public comment. Again, if you're on Zoom, use that hand raise feature. Seeing none. Okay. Great.
Motion to close hearing on?
I'll accept it, I mean, I'll accept the motion if you want. I don't know if we wanted to look at the draft decision quickly as well? Because, just to make sure, that will be in the staff report?
You have a printed hard copy, I believe, as well in the binders.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, because we had discussed the expediency of having a draft decision as long as it was in order, being able to get signed and filed tomorrow.
That's why I wanted to make sure that we talked about that as well now, so we could get that squared away. And if we saw anything, we could discuss it, rather than be like, oh, public hearings already closed, stinks to be you.
Absolutely, appreciate it, thank you.
I can print one out, try anyway.
Yeah, I think I only have the ones for Goodrich and Sunny Hill.
Trying to shoot it to this printer right here, as I review it.
Just going ahead in the staff report to the.
I gotta turn that on, nope, I guess I don't.
And this is stormwater management, does this have the language in it about recording?
It does.
This decision shall be recorded with the Western North District Registry of Deeds. Love it.
You're telling me about the decision of the deed recording, the additional?
Yeah.
That's number 23, that's included in all the standard conditions. This decision shall be recorded by reference of the property deed for the subject property.
Yep, makes sense, thank you.
Actually, I gotta fill in the motion and vote. Let's take a second.
No problem.
Assuming that they have voted yet, so.
Okay. Do we have any thoughts, questions, or concerns about the draft decision? Not hearing any. And did we already see the stormwater, like, the maintenance books and everything? Okay.
Yes.
Great. Love it.
All checked out by the peer review.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions, no public comment. Now, I would look for a motion, if we're ready, to close the hearing for the stormwater management permit for 213 Electric Ave.
Mr. Willsmer has to make the motion, only because that's how I have it written.
Okay.
Public hearing for 213 Electric Avenue Stormwater Management Permit.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is closed. Now, do we have further deliberation on this? Look straight forward to me. Great. We could have a motion to approve the stormwater management permit for 213 Electric Ave, including the plan of record, with all standard conditions and the test pit special condition as previously discussed. Does that work, Chris?
Yes.
Love it. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Grab a correct pen for signing.
One down, work this way.
Yep. And they need this signed copy tonight, correct?
They'd like it.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll file it tomorrow.
That is A.O.K.
I'll have to inconvenience the board to come in and sign stuff.
There is an error on the one I am holding, and Mr. Ellison is not here.
We can, we can adjust that.
Okay.
As long as you're comfortable.
The decision's.
What we'll do is white out the, and change the vote numbers on the.
If that's allowed, if that's allowed, I have no problem with that personally. Okay, great, because it's still, I care about the language of the decision.
In fact, you're correcting it.
Great. So, last two pages are on top. And next up is going to be 711 Mass Ave. Was gonna finish getting this signed and across. Let me see. Thank you. Can you just give that a double check and make sure we signed correctly? Because the lines are stripped. Because the lines are stretched. I could envision a world where I or someone else...
I went based upon you that it's the one.
Yeah, no, I think... I recognize I could be the one who started a bad trend.
Nope, this is correct.
Okay, wonderful. Love it. All right, that's all set. Let's move on to 711 Mass Ave. This is another hearing continued to today.
Dan Shan with Haley Ward, again, here on behalf of the applicant for 711 Mass Ave. Last before you, we kind of went over some of these brief changes, went out to public, sorry, for peer review by Graves Engineering. Pretty much came back, everything was A-OK. They caught a grading change that needed to be addressed, which was for lots one, units one and two. So we revised the plans to kind of show that as well. Biggest thing here, I'm just gonna walk over to the board to kind of point it out. Really had to come over here. Just switch it coming this way, so everything, the pages where it's supposed to. And again, for the microphone, just switched it from being on one side of the driveway to the proper building corner and make sure things drain appropriately.
Ruining all the fun. Don't want water flowing into a garage.
Exactly.
All right, okay. Again, this is that de minimis change due to slope grading, et cetera. Graves has looked at it, had the one point of feedback fixed. Questions from the board?
I believe, sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the site plan now. There was a question about what was marked as snow storage.
That's correct.
Not having the correct amount of space. Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up.
No, that's fine. And through you, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, please.
The question was before that because that rip rap slope, I kind of continued up.
Yeah.
Could you actually fit that snow storage there? So we actually relocated some storage between units three and seven.
Okay.
I will go back over to the board to kind of show it. It's the same surface area, and we actually gained a little bit more, because you could still fit some snow storage where it was originally proposed, just not as much.
Sure.
So this is the same snow storage that was shown here, shift it over here, and an additional electrical snow storage.
Okay. Great.
Excellent. Thank you.
Love it. Okay. This is a public hearing. Do we have public comment? Seeing none. All right. Okay, so, actually, yeah, de minimis change is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure it wasn't, I mean, I'll ask anyway, I don't care.
Nope, yeah, it is.
Yeah, great. Okay. Do we need further information, or are we comfy at this point?
Did you upload, all this is uploaded in the...
Correct.
We have all the latest revised plans.
Yep, latest revises got revised on Friday. I had uploaded it then.
Okay, yep.
Great.
It all seems to be in order.
All right. I would, so, we're gonna close the public hearing. We are then going to decide if this is a de minimis change. Then, we will vote if we're in favor of the de minimis change. It's gonna be a three-step process, okay? So, looking for a motion to close the public hearing for the de minimis change to the 711 Mass Ave. What was, is this a stormwater?
Site plan review.
Site plan review. Thank you.
And special permit.
And special permit.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have seen this. Do we feel it's a de minimis change?
Here's the debate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we'll have a formal vote.
Motion to approve or accept this de minimis change?
Sure. I don't, this is a step we've typically done that I don't know how required by law it is, so I think that works. Motion to accept as de minimis change? Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We could have a, we could have a motion to approve the de minimis change to the 711 Mass Ave site plan review as per the plan of record.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Woo!
Thank you.
Thank you. Probably don't want to use my ink pen to write on the computer screen. That would be poor form, but another one down. Now, we are on to 994 Northfield Road, site plan review.
Good evening. It's a son? There it is.
Yep.
Greg Roy with Dillison Roy, representing the applicant, which is the Lunenburg Conservation Commission. We were here a month ago, I think, or five weeks ago. I can't remember if it was a five-week month or not, but to open the meeting. And just to refresh everybody's memory, the Conservation Commission has received some grant money to construct a parking lot on the, on the conservation land known as the Table Rock property, which is immediately adjacent to the golf course and Stage Coach Road on the northerly side of Northfield Road. When we were here before you, a month ago, we did take some comments from the abutters. I don't believe your board had any comments at that time. And I also wanted to allow time to get through the Conservation Commission process, which was, which we have run concurrently. Just by way of status update, the Conservation Commission did close that and approve, voted to issue the order of conditions last week, Wednesday, so that process is now behind us. So, the plan that you have in front of you here is the latest and greatest plan, so to speak, as it was presented to the, and approved by the Conservation Commission last week. There had, there's not a lot of changes to this plan from the look and feel of it from the last time we were here, but I did want to go over a few key points for you, because they were addressed by the, some of the abutters last time that were here before your board. We made some statements, and I wanted to close the, close the loop on them. One thing that we said was that the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP for short, had reviewed the stormwater calculations that we submitted on this project. While it doesn't require a stormwater management permit from your board per your bylaw, because it doesn't have the prerequisite 40,000 square feet, it does require compliance with the Massachusetts, the 10 standards of the Massachusetts stormwater management policy, and that's reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission as part of that process. DEP did issue some comments relative to stormwater, which we did address to their satisfaction, also to the satisfaction of the Conservation Commission. So, so that's all behind us now. This plan set incorporates that. There really was not any substantive changes. There was some clarifications and things that we added to the, a few portions of the stormwater system, but nothing. The system really wasn't, is no different today than when I presented it to you a month ago. Secondly, we did make some changes per the Conservation Commission relative to the proposed wetland replication area, which is that sort of mass of vegetation, that ring of dash line on the left portion of the plan. Really doesn't have anything to do with your board, but I did want to just point it out to you. We did work through an iteration or two with the Conservation Commission on that. That is required to mitigate for the loss of wetlands that we have in the red crosshatched area shown on the plan. And again, not really germane to your board, but just, just keeping you apprised. And then, some comments that we heard were access issues, I guess, or legal access issues of folks either from a budding property onto this lot or from this lot onto the budding property. That also came up in the conservation process as well. So, one of the things that we did agree to do on the, I'm gonna call it north westerly side there, we added a thick hedgerow of shrubs, naturalized shrubs in there to discourage folks from walking onto, particularly onto the golf course property, and also to discourage any errant golf balls, if yours truly is golfing there, to discourage any golf balls from getting into the, to the facility. There really wasn't any other significant changes that we made to the plans. The Conservation Commission and their agent, Mr. Pease, is here, who is a former member of the Conservation Commission, but is a very active member of the community relative to conservation lands. Bob is working with the Commission on this project and is working to reorientate the trails that exist to access the back of the Table Rock property, so that they go through the center of this property from the, from this location instead of accessing off of Stage Coach Road, which we think is going to mitigate several logistical issues. So, I think that's all. I just wanted to give you that update. I know there's some abutters here. I think there might be some folks on the calls, on the, on the call too, so I'll stop talking there. Happy to take any questions or comments.
Great, thank you. I will turn to the board first and ask, do we have questions from the board at this time?
The only thing I have at the moment is I don't think we have, or at least in my documents here, I don't have that version of the plan. The one that we have here appears to be the older, the original document that we were given at the previous meeting.
Okay, okay. Can we make sure that...
I think that was just uploaded to Open Gov at the very end of the day. Let me check for that.
Great, thank you.
Did you upload that to the...
I would have to ask Ryan. I'm not sure. I thought it was given to you last week in advance of the CONCON meeting, but I'm not sure about that.
I guess something today or recently. Anyway, yeah, that's one thing.
We'll make sure we get that in. Great, but understood. Okay.
Yeah, he did get that in.
Yeah.
I saw it.
Great.
It just hasn't been up.
Yeah, we'll get it onto our files too, but also if we want to go up, we can certainly go up and review that plan, or they can hand it up to us as well.
The real difference is the shrubs. I don't think you'd notice much of a difference other than... This blob used to be over here.
Yeah.
Rotate that around and we added some shrubs.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I'm gonna open up for public comment, but I'm sure there's no public commenting on this. That's untrue. All right, let's go. I'm guessing there'll be public comment, because I see some familiar faces. Is there public comment on this? As always, we'll ask you to please share your name and address.
I'm Laura Karen Gustus. I reside at 19 Burke Street, and I'm one of the property owners of 994 Northfield Road. And I voiced, you know, you've all heard my issues. One thing that is blatantly obvious to me is why is this being 994 Northfield Road? 994 Northfield Road is the golf course. That is not my property where this is being presented. So I'm a little concerned. I mean, I know in the past, the zoning officer was responsible for renumbering properties, that type of thing. So I don't know why it's being classified as 994. I mean, I've seen it on social media already, that people are saying, the parking is, you know, because it's being sated as 994. They're assuming it's the golf course.
Okay.
That's...
Yeah, and I'm the manager there, and I already have my signs ready to put up that it's for patrons only. Others will be towed. We have a league night, and there's no extra parking. I mean, we are maxed full capacity when we have our paying golfers there. So if people are gonna start parking, saying, hey, parking over the golf course, you know, because it's 994 Northfield Road, they're gonna get their cars towed, because it's private property.
Well, the applicant is not directing people to your pro, I understand the question about this.
It's on social media.
But it is already on social media. I have seen it there.
Parking at the golf course.
Yes.
So people go to 994.
I don't understand what you mean by, if you could help me, you're saying is on social media that this parking at the golf course?
Right, because of the...
The address is, settlers crossing the golf course is 994 Northfield Road.
Okay, so, you are saying that the address given for this property...
Is not, that's a separate property from me. My property is 994 Northfield Road.
Okay, well, it sounds like, I would like this clarified anyway before we kind of, I want to feel this one out a little bit, because I don't know what happens when the address of record is also the used address of another location.
Right.
I would turn to either our land use director for the, or the applicant, just for some thoughts on this. They're saying that the 994 Northfield is the golf course's address.
Okay.
Not this parcel's address.
Yeah, when we get an application that's stamped and certified, we assume that's accurate information. We can't...
Yep, no, that's fine. I'm just try, I'm trying to figure out what's going on here.
The applicant can...
We got phones, but you guys have computers. Can you just see what GIS says the address is?
I never remember how to look at GIS. I'm awful.
Can email the link to that to the board right now if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
I guess my question is, where did the commission get the address information?
Probably the GIS. That's why I'm asking.
Well, that property, originally back, back, I believe, back in the day, it was a 500-acre parcel. It was subdivided to approximately 250 acres each. 250 was to the golf course, and the surrounding area was property of the Salibas owned it at that time. And so the property that the parking is geared, is actually on, is the surrounding area from the golf course. But it's, it's still being numbered as the golf course.
GIS, looks like it has it as 994 Northfield Road hashtag rear. The map and parcel information appear to be accurate on the application itself, map 37 parcel 15, which is, to my understanding, not the golf course?
What does it say the golf course is then?
So there should be that R denotation.
Gotcha.
It shouldn't just be 994, it should be 994 dash R.
Okay.
That makes me a little more fearsome too, because now they're gonna think they can go to the back of our golf course.
Okay. Well, I mean, we, what we can do here is we can ensure that the parcel is identified correctly. What we don't have the ability to do on this board is give another number.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the best we can do is...
And I understand that. I've spent through that process in the past, so I do understand that. Is that something that I should be approaching the zoning officer for? I know that's who did it previously.
In terms of what you can approve, based on the testimony, information available to you, that can just be part of the motion. You're approving the plan of record for 994 R.
R, yeah, but...
And that way, there's no approval on their property.
Yeah, but...
From you.
Who isn't, who do you talk to for road numbers? Is that zoning?
Who assigns the, usually the fire department?
Assessors.
Assessors?
They ask the fire department, and then they give a recommendation to the assessors. The assessors puts the identifiers on it, like the parcel.
Okay, and, well, I would like, if you allow Tanya to speak, she had an issue, a few issues this past week at the property with regards, and she's had to call the police.
On trespassing, yeah.
On trespassing, but...
The, I, when nicer weather's here, so I've had people out on the course. I had to call the police the other day, because I had a couple gentlemen park right after our parking lot, and they were told down on eight that they, you know, we're closed, you can't be here. They chose to not listen to my coworker, who was there at the time, who then called me as the manager, and I went right over, but I called the police on my way, because, you know, they're not supposed to be there. We're closed. The police came, and they said, you know, I did the right thing, because they're not supposed to be there. It's private property. They let them know that it's considered stealing, because it's a paying business. They're supposed to pay to golf. When I asked them about the parking, if they knew anything about the parking, they was gonna be coming in, they said no. And I said, okay, well, you know, I know that you guys come here a lot. Like, the two officers that were there, I'd already... I'd already had two previous times to get two people off the golf course. So they were just surprised that there was no... They, you know, they said, well, is there going to be a net put up, you know, to stop the golf balls or from people coming over? Like, they questioned me first, and I said, no. They're going to put some brush in there to try to stop it. But the issue is, is that whatever anybody says, I'm there all the time, and I see at firsthand people just trying to come on from the parking lot, the side of the road. People will try to come over. So who, you know, do we just keep calling the police?
I mean, ultimately, this board does not have jurisdiction over trespassers.
Right, one of my questions is...
I can't, I can't answer... You should do what is appropriate for trespassers on your property.
Yeah, because signs aren't going to work. Signs, people don't read the signs. I have people parking under my sign that says no loitering, having a couple beers and sitting in lawn chairs. And I'm like, you're under a no loitering sign. You've got to go. You know, signs aren't going to matter.
You have to have signs up in order to tow...
Oh, yeah, I have those signs. Those signs I already have.
Prosecute if it's criminal trespass.
Yeah, no, I have parking for patrons only. You will be towed.
Yeah, okay.
I have all that.
So...
And no trespassing in private property.
I know you don't want to do that, but...
Yeah, but I do have the signs ready to put up.
I mean, I have a question. Just less chair directing things. This is a board member trying to figure things out. What are you looking for with these comments? What I mean by that, and I, if that sounds trite, I don't mean it that way. But, I mean, okay, there's... And I do see we have hands on Zoom, by the way. We'll get out eventually. We'll get to everyone. It seems to me like adding a parking lot would decrease the illegal parking on your property and would make it much easier to make sure people are by default directed to the correct place to be. So I don't understand.
So I guess because this parking is going to be out of sight, out of mind in the woods, I mean, you're not going to see it from the road. We have a big, open parking lot. The house is right across the street. It's a residential neighborhood. I have issues in a big, open parking lot. So there's going to be issues in a wooded, secluded parking lot. And I'm just voicing my concern that I've already had damage done at the course without having parking in the woods. So it's just a concern that now there's going to be more damage done or people coming over because it's a secluded area.
I see people are standing up to speak. I am going to get to everyone. I don't really care if you stand to the side, frankly, but you can also sit and just let me know when you want, like, raise your hand, and I will get to you. So I don't want you to... I will take public comment till it's basically exhausted. So I don't want you to feel like you have to be on your knees. And, I mean, as someone who just spent the weekend walking in Portland, I'm very happy to be sitting right now.
Really, you have to support our neighbors and folks.
Okay. Okay. So, all right. Anything else?
No, that's it. I, you know, like I had questioned before if you would receive any input from the police and DPW with regards to that. And, you know, where Tanya had just spoken with the police officers last week, and they had no knowledge of this even of being presented.
A parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, so that's one of my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Other public comment? Go ahead. I am going to, for our friends on Zoom, I am just going to get us through some of the public comment in the room and then hop over to Zoom. I've had two more public comments in the room that I saw lined up, and then I will get to the two that I see active in Zoom. Just letting everyone know where we are. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Michelle Matthew, and I live on 914 Northfield Road. And I will be probably affected by this the most because it's right across from my house from where the woods are. I'm a little bit nervous about the whole thing because I am worried about people partying in the woods. It's more the aftereffect of at night, what's going to happen at night. I don't feel like, I feel like this is going to make our neighborhood not as safe as it is now. So I went around and I spoke to the other neighbors of their thoughts and concerns. And I have 13 signatures here. A couple of them are just, you know, a couple from the same residents. But I have 13 people, most of them are abutting this property in the neighborhood, that do not want to see this parking going in. So if you guys want that.
Okay, you can submit then. That will become part of the public record. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you, actually. Because as the table rock is currently set, the only access is the road that you are situated on.
Mm-hmm.
Is it beneficial to you to have people continuing to access the table rock through what is effectively...
Yeah, so it's been, you know, maybe one car, two cars. Sometimes they park across the street. Sometimes they park on the dirt road. I don't particularly like it when they park on the dirt road, but it's not a big deal. And it's mostly just neighbors walking their dogs or whatever. I don't have, you know, it's been okay. What I'm worried about is if it's going to be more people in the woods that I can't see at night. When you're talking about people just going there and parking, people dropping off trash in the woods, like, you know, mattresses, stuff like that, or just that area. So it's more of a night concern to me, what's going to happen at night there to change the atmosphere of the neighborhood. I'm just a little worried, a little concerned because it's always been private. We have a good neighborhood. I just don't want to change on how it's going to be. I'm a little, I'm afraid of that.
Okay.
So that's my reasons. Thank you.
What are our town regulations regarding access to public land after hours?
Public order? That would be in the general bylaws, public order. Usually at dusk, public trails or town-owned trails...
Sure.
Are closed.
So it currently, as it stands, people would not be allowed to go to Table Rock past dusk?
Yeah, there would be signs, and then is it for... It's always a question of enforcement, but... And I would say, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you to the board, in situations like this I've had, usually there's some sort of security device that's proposed, you know, some kind of camera that monitors it directly to the police station so they can see and, more importantly, identify who may be there when they shouldn't be after hours or when it's closed, or just they shouldn't be where they are. It's two things that, you know, they're informed. Somebody's out there when they shouldn't be. And more importantly, they're identified on the security footage. So that's one option to sort of address those type of concerns.
All right, thank you. Please, sir, yes. And after our friend here speaks, we will then go to Mary Wilson, then Cory S., in that order online. I'll call on you.
How you doing? Arthur Dragozil is 971 Northfield Road. As Michelle has stated, there is hardly anyone in the entire neighborhood that welcomes this thing. There's hardly anybody. Everybody's against it. So I think we need to also pay attention to what the neighbors, who've been there for a very, very long time. Now, I walk Table Rock many, many times. There is no parking needed there in order for you to enjoy Table Rock. And you should be left as nature intended it to be, just like that. Okay? Another big issue that we're having there is illegal dumping. Not too long ago, I built my house in 971, three years ago, and right at the entrance from Northfield Road going into the parking, for I would say a period of over three or four months, there were couches, there were mattresses, there was all kinds of materials that they were there that I don't know when they were picked up, but eventually they were picked up. Now, on my side of the road, on 971, and I implore any of you to come in tomorrow with a camera and see what's there. TVs, computers, monitors thrown everywhere. Obviously, this parking lot, I'm afraid, is also going to attract, it's going to attract people that are also enjoying Table Rock. But I think I want the board to think on the opposite direction, what better element is going to attract? It's going to attract good elements. It's going to attract normal people that are going to enjoy that. But at 11 o'clock at nighttime, I don't think it's going to attract any hikers. And I think that those hedges there by the parking lot, they were put there to stop a golf ball. I mean, I think if anybody golfs in here, is anybody a golfer in here? No hedge has ever stopped a golf ball. That's not the point. I understand that. But then why are they putting the hedges there? To please who? To please the board? Or to just put a veil over us? If you want to do it right, put a net, put a wall, then no golf ball, no golf ball can reach the cars that are there. What is that? Is that an illusion to put, to put that there? You trying to make it look nice or what?
The applicant said it was to discourage...
To discourage what, golf balls?
I'm getting there, but I would like to not be interrupted while I'm speaking.
I will not, go ahead.
I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the applicant said they were there primarily to discourage people from walking out of the parking lot in the direction of the golf course.
Of the golf course.
Do I understand that correctly?
We're asked to do it. We don't, we don't collect the...
Yeah.
We're accepting the risk of golf balls, as the applicant...
Yeah.
But we just put it in a really discouraged form.
The idea is, Table Rock has been there for many, many years in this town, and people enjoy it the way it is. There's never been an issue with parking there.
Okay.
Nobody has come to this town and said, we need more parking there because we need 10 cars or 15 cars for people to park for Table Rock. Now, all of a sudden, because we've got a grant, we have to spend the grant money for that? Is that why we're doing this? Or our neighborhood is more important than the grant money? Or the people that are paying all those property taxes is more important than the grant money? And that's what the board has to decide. On my point of view, although I'm not affected by it, I see a lot of people, because my driveway is a circular driveway, a lot of people backing up and turning around, and I don't know whether they go on to Table Rock. Well, there's a mistake. I'm afraid of that. But I'm also afraid of all the dumping that's going on right at that point. And I'm talking about right at the point at the entrance to go to Table Rock on that road, or 974 or whatever it is, or 994 Northfield Road. And the town has to look at that because we looked at garbage for two years, and that was enough. And right now, even today, I'm still looking at TVs and monitors on my side of the road.
As somebody who lives on Northfield Road, 762 Northfield Road, the dumping is already a problem. Having, I feel, having a space in which is owned by the town and monitored by the town would be beneficial to reducing the amount of dumping that is there. It would have it under the town's control and under the town's desire to keep clean.
So what you're telling me is that the town, the town is going to check that area where the parking lot is, but the town is not checking the side of the road where it goes in? Is that what you're telling me?
Because it's not the town's property. Like, they don't pick up the trash in front of my house that gets a lot of dumped tires, people's nick bottles, constantly things, because it's my property. I'm responsible for it.
Yeah, this is nobody's property. It's not my property. This is like woods. This is like, this is town property.
Okay, I'm going to pause this for a second, okay? I'm, we have other people to get through, and I don't want to be rude.
No.
Do you have any other points here on this right now?
No.
Okay. I'm not, I'm, this is not...
My point again, on the final thing, is that let's pay attention to how many people are for this from the neighborhood and how many people are against this from the neighborhood because we're supposed to serve the people of this town.
Thank you. Now, I, we have three people in Zoom. I'm going to get to in a row. Now, I do want to pause this for one moment. I want to set, I want to clarify expectations because I want us to be, to walk into this and understand. This board handles land use. This is a site, this is just a site plan review, correct? Let me double-check that in my... Yep. A site plan review means regardless of the, in this case, the applicant is the town coming before the board. But a site plan review is a fairly straightforward process in that when there's a special permit, there's a lot of leniency the board has in terms of looking very holistically at everything. When it is a site plan review, we have a, we have a much more limited scope. Now, that does not, this is public comment, okay? People are welcome to come, say their piece. If it isn't exactly within our purview, you can still come and say your piece by and large. That's fine. I mean, if you know you're talking about something not in our purview, please don't. But like, I get, I don't expect people to be experts here. But I need everyone to understand that there's a lot we either have very limited ability to take into account or don't have ability to take into account because we're dealing with something that is by right. Much like if someone buys an acre of land in a residential zone and wants to build a house, well, they get, they get to build their house. It, that is a by right use of the area. If they're going to build something commercial, a commercial zone, that's generally a by right use. The planning board is there, and it is our job to make sure that requirements are being met. It is our, we can do our best to help facilitate discussions between concerned parties. Ultimately, and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, ultimately, what we can decide upon is more limited than the public might expect in many of these circumstances. Doesn't mean we don't want to know. Doesn't mean it's not worth us hearing. But I do hear things being brought up that I'm not sure we can as directly address overall. And we'll see how it settles in the end as we talk things through between the parties. But Chris, would you say that's overall accurate? Or would you say have misrepresented?
No, I think you're spot on, actually. And I'm just pulling up something here for guidance to the board. This is sort of a gospel in planning by Mark Probowski, my friend Mark Probowski. He's sort of like the state guru on land use interpretation. And he says you cannot deny site plan review. You can condition with reasonable conditions to address directly impacts, but the board does not have the authority to deny.
And that, I mean, that assumes a certain level of completeness, which we, this is a complete application. Again, doesn't mean points, your points are being heard. There are things we can consider, we can discuss with the applicant. I just want to set expectations for everyone involved because there's often the idea that we as boards have more leniency in decision-making than we might. I would like to get on to some other members, the people we haven't heard from yet. I will invite you back up later, not looking to be limited. I see we have Mary Wilson up next. So again, for people on Zoom, do please share your ad, your name and your address, and then tell us what you're thinking.
Thank you for calling on me. My name is Mary Wilson, I live at 138 Whiting Street, and I am currently the Lunenburg Conservation Commission Chair. So, I did wanna address a couple of the concerns that have been expressed here, if I may, Mr. Chair, is there have been a number of people approaching the Conservation Commission, asking for improved access to Table Rock, and also pointing out a lack of safe access to Table Rock. And this land has come to the town because the town purchased it. We did purchase it with the help of the, a grant, but I think the grant only funded 60% of the property value, so there's real money that the town has invested in, in this parcel, for the use of the public. And if I may, I have photos of the entrance area and the trail access area that I'd like to share.
You have, you said videos?
No, it's photos.
Photos. Let me check with our Land Use Director quickly. We have someone on Zoom who would like to share photos, as you've heard, and I just wanna, I don't know what the process is, because I know they have to enter into record and everything if they share them with us, and... Can she just email them to you as well?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. If you could, if you could send them in as well as, yeah, if you could send them in, they can get to us that way, would be the best way.
Okay. So instead of sharing, don't share and then send them, just send them?
We're not, we don't typically have speakers share their computers, for all the reasons people would, unless you think it's...
Okay.
I don't really have a problem with it, I tend to play cautious.
Yeah, I just keep it to the record, submission to the record.
Okay. So, please email it, and we can see it tonight, right away, that won't be an issue.
Okay. Good.
And then, if there's things you want us to know about specifically, while we're looking at them, I can call back to you.
So you're saying to share them now, and then also send them?
Yeah, email them to the Land Use Director, to Chris.
Yeah.
That can get it to us, then we can look at it, and you can then talk to us about it. But I'll, what I'll do is I'll go on in the conversation a bit, then come back once we have the files, if that works.
Okay. They're, they're rather large. Chris, is it okay if I send you, like, share this Dropbox folder with you? Would you be able to download them from there?
I should be able to, yeah. Go to try.
Okay, I'll try that. And then, Mr. Chair, maybe just move on. That, that really was what I wanted to show, was the access and why there's an interest, concern about safety, and an interest to provide better safe access.
Great, thank you. And once we have them, we can also put them on Zoom and everything, too. So, perfect.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you. May I get back to you in a bit? Thank you so much. I'm going to go on to Cory S. I see you're ready, thank you very much. And again, just share your name and address, and tell us what you wanna say.
Cool. Hi, this is Cory Schnepper and Juliana Weber from 872 Northfield Road, and we are abutters to the 994, and just wanted to say that we are in support of the parking lot being put in. We do think that more access to conservation land is beneficial to the town. We do really like how the lane conservation area is really easy to access right now.
Yeah, and I am a field ecologist by trade. I've looked through the, the plan a little bit, and I agree with the plants and everything that they've put into that. They've definitely done their homework.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we get both of, did we get both of your names, or just one? I wanna make sure, since you both spoke, both have a record, that's all.
I gave both names, so I'm Cory Schnepper.
And Juliana Weber.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move us on to Chris Martins.
Yeah, how you doing? Chris Martins, 981 Northfield Road. I guess this should have been, my comment should again, would be more towards Mary Wilson. I unfortunately came into this late. I don't know what, how close you need to be in a butter to be a budded, but I'm across the street, and right down the street a little bit. Actually, the, the TV the gentleman was talking about before is at the end of my driveway also, it's been sitting there for five years. If I could pick it up, I would, but unfortunately, it's, it's kinda heavy. Maybe we can get together and pick it up ourselves. But, I'm just curious as to why we're not using the parking site that's originally there, across the street from Table Rock, and why we'd be cutting it to the wetlands and the vernal pools that are there? Once again, I, I know this has no reflection on your board, it should have been a Conservation Board question, but like I said, I came into this late, and that's just a couple of questions I have, is why are we disturbing wetlands that are there, when there's already a parking spot across the street, and the, the vernal pools that are in those wetlands? So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martins, and I, I believe Ms. Wilson has heard that being in the meeting, and will probably get back to that when she speaks next. Well, may choose to, I should say, I don't know, I'm not gonna tell people what they have to say. Okay, do we have those pictures now?
I don't see anything yet in my inbox.
All right, we will give that a few. And, go ahead.
Following up on the statement before about, like, putting, having security cameras in the parking lot, who, how is that specified or guaranteed? Like, is that something that we would specify in our process, or does that have to go...
You put that as a condition, as part of the approval.
We can't put that as a condition. Okay.
And then, yeah, it gets paid for, goes up...
Sure.
And then it's accessible by the police station, obviously...
Yeah.
And fire station, directly.
All right? Okay. Excellent. Thank you. I'm going to, while we're waiting on the email to come through, I, and Ms. Wilson, if you want, just to kinda spam it out a bit, if you also wanna send it to me, mbranner@whatever our town...
LunenburgMA.gov.
At lunenburgMA.gov.
Okay. I just, I just sent the link to Chris, I'll do that to M. Brenner as well.
Okay, great, just that, in case one of us will get it faster than the other, or something, help out there.
Oh, I got Dirk Dixon via Dropbox. Let me try to send this to you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's my family Dropbox.
Great.
Dirk Wilson.
But, but then we can also put that up in Zoom for everyone to see what we talk about. In the meantime, I want to turn to the applicant and say, a bunch of people have spoken. Do you wish to reply to anything at this time? That's your call.
I am the applicant.
Oh, yeah, that's fair.
Bob P.'s 11 winner of Green Court, Mary's the applicant.
Yeah.
Greg is the applicant's agent, and I'm an interested person who's been working on this for a long time, start going way back to when we acquired the property. First of all, someone mentioned something about security cameras. You have to know that the Conservation Commission has zero, zero tax dollars for maintaining its conservation lands. Everything that happens on there is either grant-funded, or is done by volunteers. All the trails you see, they're created by volunteers. All the trash that gets picked up, it's done by volunteers. But the only thing that happens is sometimes DPW will come down and pick up, like, the couch and stuff that the guy was talking about before that was dumped by the kiosk. And sometimes people come down and dump stuff at our Table Rock, and I, I'm sorry, at our lane property parking lot. You know, and we call DPW and they come down and pick it up. You know, but you also have to know the Conservation Commission members and members of the public go down there and pick that parking lot up. And the same thing would happen here. You know, I've been working on, on putting a new center trail up the center of that land, and I can tell you, all along the front of that land, it's, it's totally covered with litter. And, and I can tell you that, you know, once we get in there, we'll pick all that litter up. You know, volunteers will pick all that litter up, you know, so it'll be an improvement. I'm sure all the abutters would love it if it remained vacant land, and no one ever came and used it. I'm sure they would love that. I mean, Mrs. Matthew made it clear in the public hearing when we bought the land, that she didn't want people going up that road. She made that very clear, you know, during the public hearing, at town meeting when we bought that land. She continues to do, well, she continues to have three signs. She has a private property sign on the right-hand side, which is her right, because the right side is her land, okay, and she has a private property sign there. She has another sign that goes up, you go up a little farther, and it says, "No parking, private drive," and then she has another sign that goes, and that's like, sort of like on the main road, which, by the way, is owned by the town. She has, as far as I know, it's owned by the town, but they have a right to pass and repass. She and, and the people, there's another house farther up the road. Which means that, therefore, we can't put a gate across it. I would love to be able to put a gate across it, so people can't drive up there and, you know, abuse the property. But we can't put a gate across it because, you know, we have two houses, you know, for which, you know, that's, that's their right of way, that's their driveway, and they have every legal right, you know, to go up there. You know, and the Conservation Commission's, you know, committed to honoring that. I, I can tell you when the conserva, when people start to use a property more heavily, a lot of the abuses that you hear about go away. Like, right now, we have issues up there with people riding side-by-sides, and ATVs, and dirt bikes, and, and tearing the place up. And when people use it more heavily, that will stop. You know, just because, you know, people are up there, you know, and they see it. So, you know, and we had, so, you know, the whole idea about security cameras, which, which sounds nice, we, we have no budget, you know, there's, there's no way to get, that I know of, to get an electrical drop in there. Someone would have to pay for the electricity, you'd have to provide internet access, probably, you know, unless you're gonna do some kinda like, you know, cellphone thing or something like that. But all of that, there, there is no money for that. So, I just, I may have more remarks later, but I just wanted to address that, you know, at this time. And I'm sure we probably would be happy to put up a no golf cart access there, or to put up no trespassing signs. You know, I'm, I'm interested in marking the entire border there, you know, where the conservation lands ends, and the settlers' crossing land begins. But, you know, there's nothing to stop the golf carts, of course, from putting up no trespassing signs along the edge of their property, or putting up a barbed wire fence, or, or anything else. You know, you know, I, I'm sorry, but, you know, that, that, that is the way it is. As far as, you know, the two, the two properties having the same address in, in the assessor's GIS website database, you know, and it's, they have different camera numbers. And, you know, so you could make the approval, you know, reference the camera number rather than the 994 Northfield rear, so. I may have more comments later, but that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Bob stole my thunder a little, but just one quick, does, as part of the site plan approval process, maybe this is a question for Logan and Chris, does this not get circulated to all departments for comment?
No, it does.
Okay. So, the police and fire would have gotten this?
E, yes.
And we got no comments from them?
The...
As of yet, then I, I don't know of any.
No, yeah, let me check, I don't think that we have.
I guess I just wanted to confirm that it was sent to them, and that we haven't gotten any comments. That was my only thing.
Well, they get notified when you upload...
Right.
The application.
And they have an opportunity to provide...
Yeah.
Yes, they, they do have the opportunity to review and provide. Yeah, and I, that's all I wanted to say, is to get that into the record.
Those were checked off late January, January 30th.
Great. All right, thank you. Logan, I don't know if you have the files, but I have the files, so if you want, I can, you can...
You got the link, and you were able to get...
Yes, and I can get to the photos, and so I could...
Yeah, absolutely, let me make you cover us, and then you can share your screen.
It's the Dropbox of Dirk Wilson. You want me to send it to you? Do you have it loaded?
No, he's making me...
Oh, he's making you host, okay. Right? Yeah, you should, if you... There you go.
Sure. Cool, perfect. I'm going to share, and I want this window. Okay, and Mary, I can, I believe, yeah, I'm now sharing, I can go into the images you sent as you want, and you can discuss them, and we have access...
That would be great. I...
We can put them in the public record.
Mr. Chair, I actually changed the file name, A, B, C, and D, because I think that's a logical progression, if you'd start out with A image.
Got it.
Okay, so, this is across the street from Stagecoach Road, looking back towards Settlers' Crossing area. And you can see across the road, there are a lot of trees that are very close to the road. If you progress to the B image...
I'm...
I think arrow keys might do it.
Arrow, yeah.
Up at the top, it has, up at the top right-hand side, yeah, there's like a 1-2 with 2 of 8 and arrows, that sometimes is helpful.
Yep, I see, okay. Zoom is eating up a lot of my screen that doesn't show on Zoom.
Oh, I'm familiar with that, yeah. I live in Zoom.
So, there you go, yep.
So, I've annotated the same photo, right, and, and while it looked very clear on the left-hand side, in, you know, still wintertime conditions, where we have this green squiggly line, there's a bunch of multi-floor rows and whatnot that grow right up to the edge of the road. Where we have the yellow parking, that's my vehicle, that's actually the designated parking area. And so, on both sides of the roads, you can see there is a very narrow access, you actually have to walk in the road in order to access the trail. Again, the trail is where I'm standing and across the road. And there, there are people that have dogs in this neighborhood, and, you know, me and my dogs have been approached by those dogs. And everyone has a right to have a dog, no issue there, but I'm just pointing out that, you know, when their dog comes out to the end of the road, I feel like I have to cross to the opposite side, right, in order to get back to my car. If you would progress to the next image, please?
There you go.
So this is, now I'm across the street on the Stagecoach Road side of the road, so you have a perspective on how tightly those trees do in fact grow to the road. And again, you can see the car to provide some perspective of how far anyone who wants to use this property has to go, kind of on the road. And as, as Bob P.'s mentioned, all along the shoulder, there's a whole bunch of broken glass, broken parts of cars and whatnot, that make it undesirable for someone with pets, kids in, you know, open-toed shoes or whatnot to go and access this property. So if you would progress to the next slide, please? And I just took a picture of this to kinda give you a better idea of just how close to the road this is, that tree suffers damage from cars and plows and whatnot bumping off of it.
That was actually, excuse me, I just interrupted real quick, that was an accident that just happened this past weekend, a lady flipped her car three times on that tree.
Wow! Yeah, that's significant. And you can see the new, the new damage, but off to the side, there's also some older historical damage as well. Again, you know, just to point out, you have to go into the road to get to the existing parking area, you'd have to go around this tree. And go to the next one, please? Yeah, so that...
It's coming back.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. And, and again, winter conditions here on the right-hand side of the road, in the summertime, a lot of poison ivy along the sperm, we have some knotweed, knotweed unfortunately, that grows up in here as well, again, making it very narrow, so there's a long, a long path here, that any member of the public that wants to access this town land currently has to navigate from the parking area to the trail access. If you would go to the next... So this, this is private parking, or private property sign, it's on the road, it, on Stagecoach Road, it is on the, it is on the abutters side of the road, which is appropriate, but it does face down the road, so anybody walking up the road would see this and immediately go, "Oh, am I in the right place?" If you would go to the next... And so this is, this is coming up Old Stagecoach Road, and you can see there are two kind of orange signs here for no trespassing. You would go to the next one I've annotated. So the trail is here marked in blue, going up Old Stagecoach Road, and so any member of the public wanting to access this has to go past three no trespassing signs, which is, again, it is the, you know, right of the abutter to put those up, I have no issue with that, but for any member of the public going up there, you're gonna look at all those signs, particularly the ones that seem to be facing, you know, you as you walk up the road, and go, "Oh, am I in the right place? I don't know if I am." And so our, our goal... to look at all those signs, particularly the ones that seem to be facing, you know, you as you walk up the road and go, oh, am I in the right place? I don't know if I am. And so, our goal with creating this and proposing this parking area is to move traffic away from this abutter, move it into a managed parking area and to improve access and safe access. And one of the things that Bob brought up as he was talking is that, you know, once this, we have better access here, we, as a commission, through our many volunteers, would, you know, be picking up that area, right, and actively able to maintain it. You may know that since I've actually, before I was on the commission, I have been sponsoring in town and coordinating April Earth Days, which is a whole series of events across the town to help maintain and, you know, take care of our many public properties. And I've been limited from doing that in this Table Rock area because I just don't have safe access for those volunteers to get into the property and do what we would want them to do. When we have a parking area, we would be able to provide better volunteer access for maintaining it and cleaning it up, right? And then even outside of the volunteer activities, right? Just, it is a public resource that should be made available to the public and I think the public has a right to expect safe access, which we currently don't enjoy. Any questions about the photos?
I don't have any questions about the photos.
I have a question.
Okay, so I'm going to turn to the board. I hear you. I'm going to go to the board first and then I'll come out, okay? Do we have any questions about the photos at this time?
No.
So, this is where we have to get, it gets a little tricky. This is public, so let me lay this out. This is public comment, it isn't public square-off or debate. So, I'm going to say, Mayor, we have another member of the public here with a question about the photos. Do you mind taking a question from another member of the public? That's really your prerogative. They can then come up and comment independently, but do you mind taking that question now?
I'd be glad to take that question.
Okay, great. So, I do, yep, has to be at the microphone because if we're not at the microphone, then our friends at home or for the recording can't hear us.
Hi, Mary.
And just give your name and address.
My name is Arthur Dragoslis, 971 Northfield Road, directly across from Settlers' Crossing.
Hi, Arthur.
When you failed to put on those pictures the big sign in the corner that actually points to Table Rock, that, I don't know if it was done intentionally or not, because you're saying that people do not know which way to go. There is a huge sign there, probably around six foot wide with all the trails printed on it?
Four foot wide, I put it there.
That directs people to the trails, right?
Correct.
Okay. Also, why don't we take the grant money and improve on the parking lot that's already there? Why do we need to do another parking lot? Why don't we take the money and improve the parking lot that's already existing there?
Arthur, the grant money is for Table Rock parcel and it can't be leveraged for anything besides that parcel.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you. Also, as far as the trail not being walkable, I must tell you that I do have a four-year granddaughter that we walk that Table Rock at least 20 to 25 times a year. So, I don't see the point where people do not know where to go.
All right.
If my four-year-old knows where to go to Table Rock, I'm sure an adult can figure that out as well.
Okay. Thank you. And, all right, Mary, do you have anything else on the photos for us?
I do not. Thank you for your time.
Okay, and Mary, I do want to apologize. Yes, I should turn to you as the applicant. I'm very much in the habit of sitting here and we say the applicant and then actually look at the applicant's engineer and/or lawyer.
That's perfectly okay. It happens in the Conservation Commission meetings as well, so I understand. I think you're doing a fine job.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And Logan, if you would please make me no longer, well, I'm just going to leave the meeting so I can't screw things up.
Fair enough.
That sounds like a wiser, great.
Do you see a raised hand, Chris Martin?
Okay. Mr. Martin, please.
Hi, Chris Martin, 981 Northfield Road again. First of all, thank you, Mary, for those pictures. They were very enlightening. The depth perception on those looks a little off though because I don't think the trails are actually as far away as you're showing, but that's fine. I also have two dogs. I walk up and down these roads all the time and I have never been approached by another dog or have felt threatened by another dog. So, I just want to make sure that we clarify all the same things. And I believe there's already a public access parking spot on Howard Road where you can access Table Rock from the backside. And there's a public access point parking lot on New Townsend Road where you can access Table Rock from that end of Table Rock. So, it's not like there is no public access to Table Rock. There's already two public parking spots that are maintained, that I walk through all the time. I take my two dogs down through Table Rock all the time that have public access.
Mary, looks like you want to respond. Sorry, Chris, thank you very much. Was that your entire point or is there more to it?
No, that was my entire point. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Looks like Mary wants to speak. We'll go back to Mary and then I'm going to turn to the board for a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Chris's point, the dog that comes out doesn't come out a lot, but, I mean, that changes over time, right? And then to the other public access, there is one car parking access on Howard and similar one car, although it's really bad, over on New West Townsend Road. There is no place where we have access for 10 cars or more than two cars for Table Rock access.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn to the board for a minute because we've heard a whole bunch. I have some thoughts, but golly, I speak so much. I'd love to hear yours first. And you may not have any concrete ones yet. That's okay. I'm not looking to pressure you, but by the same token, I don't want to dominate for the sake of being the one to speak.
I personally see a lot of benefit to having a town-controlled space that is, has posted access hours, has a team behind it that keeps the space clean, that maintains the property as it is. From my understanding of what has been said about the access points, there is enough parking for four people who do not immediately abut the Table Rock conservation to access it. I personally use the Table Rock trails myself. I find them a great place to forage for mushrooms. And I would like other people across town to have access to these trails. Yeah, that's most of my position on this or most of my thoughts on this.
Well, Mr. Willsnair, I regret to inform you that you have revealed a hobby that you will this year be educating me on.
Yeah.
Because, golly, you talk about something I'm interested in, know exactly enough to get myself killed. That's where we are. Now, I hear a lot of concerns. Some of them I don't think are going to end up falling much or at all within our purview. Again, because the applicant is, I mean, doing something by right. This is something they can do and we can make sure the letter of the law is followed. We can take the concerns of the townspeople for sure and see what we can do with conditions to help meet everyone's needs. I'm also getting the gut feeling this is going to be one of those scenarios we can't, I always like to please everybody. I like to find the middle ground. We can make every, like that place that everyone's really happy. I'm hoping we can get real close there. We're going to see. I've heard concerns about nighttime parties and additional dumping hitting the, affecting the neighborhood. I think I want to turn to the applicant or other knowledgeable people in town because this isn't the only town conservation land with semi-private parking. Well, I say semi-private, not private, like owned privately. I mean, like off-aways. I'm thinking on Holman, for example, where I like to park to walk my dogs because it's just down the, you know, just around the corner from my house. The lot there is, is there if you're going to go hiking there. Otherwise, you're not going to see it, it's pretty isolated. So, I feel like there's other parking lots in town we could get some info on and see are we, are we having problems with the big nighttime illegal parties with dump, additional problems with dumping there beyond what we see in the neighborhood otherwise? I would specifically, I think, Mary or Bob could answer that. Do we see that in the other properties and how much? The, let's start with the nighttime, the whole nighttime parties thing, which I grew up in a different small town in the sticks. I might be aware of the partying youth can do in the woods at night.
Because a lot of people are able to go to Settlers' Crossing.
So, I'm just going to remind us, if we're going to talk, it has to be at the microphone. But I'd like to know first, with our experience on the other properties, Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I actually am down at the Lane property a lot at night because that's when my schedule allows me to use that property in the wintertime. And I don't see, I don't see any partying down there. There are, you know, individual cars down there with people doing what people do. But in terms of parties, no, I don't see that. We have a very active mountain biker community who also, because of, I assume their work schedules, are down there in the evenings, particularly in the wintertime. And when they're done, they tend to come back and sit in the parking lot and chat, but it hasn't been loud. Certainly hasn't bothered my dogs, who can be temperamental. So, I haven't had any issues or seen any issues there. I haven't, I haven't heard complaints about other parking areas, but I mean, for certain, when you have parking areas, you, you know, people go and do things, high schoolers go and do things, right? The dumping has happened, but, you know, dumping happens all over town. It doesn't just happen in conservation areas. As for this parking area, I think it actually is not going to be as hidden as you might think. For certain, I think if anybody's parked back there, it will have a wide, a fairly wide access and, you know, any vehicle back there will reflect just from the beams of the vehicles going past. And if the police department, you know, says, hey, there's some issues, we can do, you know, some pruning of trees and whatnot to improve access, right, from the road. But as far as historical, you know, I've not seen, at least in my time being on the commission, that it was a big problem.
All right. Thank you. Going through my notes, another thing that's come up at times is who is responsible for damage from golf balls or something else? And I think the short answer is that isn't our purview. I mean, that really sounds like the definition of civil law over there for them, like, for the people who deal with that to deal with. I'm open to other interpretations, but that doesn't sound like an avenue we necessarily go down because that isn't the land use. That's kind of a step beyond. Please.
Is it possible in special conditions, we include some signage where it says, "Park at your own risk"? I'm assuming that might already be a standard, but I think at least that'll kind of help. I mean, it's hard when some people say there's golf balls there all the time and then other people say there's never any golf balls there, so it's, I don't really know what the answer to that is, but I feel like that would at least alert the public.
Well, let's make this real easy because we can say, would the applicant be amenable to, because if the applicant agrees, we can definitely special condition it without batting an eye. Is the applicant amenable to park at your own risk signage? I'm getting nods from the applicant's engineer.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, great. Super. So...
And the applicant agrees as well.
Okay. Great. So, that's something we can do. I know that our land use director brought up cameras and there's been concerns about, I mean, I don't think any of our other conservation land has...
Sure.
...cameras. And I think that's going to be a significant investment. Personally, let me rephrase. I feel as one board member, that feels like conditioning a lot of expense for something that historically is not an issue at similar properties.
Mr. Chair, just point of information.
Yeah, please.
I'm looking on Amazon right now at outside durable security cameras that are solar and can connect to a cellular service for, what, with the 10% coupon, $45? Just a point of information.
But they also need an electric hookup and I...
It's solar and it operates Alpha 4G cellular. It's a no Wi-Fi system.
Oh, well, we have a couple of people looking to speak on this one. Well, boom, boom, please.
I would ask that the land use direct, Bob Pease, I love when you record. I would ask that the land use director fund that out of his budget because we have none for it.
All right.
The year before, the planning board is an approval authority.
Oh, no.
Which you would know as a conservation member.
Hi, I'm Kim Duffy, 1479 Mass Ave. I wasn't anticipating speaking, but one thing kind of prompted a thought of mine about the liability of the golf balls. I would love to use Table Rock, but I don't because of the parking. Also, I didn't really super know why, so this is great. But I would request that we would advise the council on who is legally liable for if a golf ball hits a parked car on a different property because I thought that it would have been golf courses' responsibility or the golfer in their, under their insurance. So, I might not be correct, but I just wanted to double test, to double check that since I'm not legal counsel, I don't think they're here. But I just didn't want to be like, yeah, let's put up signs saying "at your own risk" and have the town assume that responsibility when it might already be someone else's responsibility.
But I think if I can, Mr. Chair, if something says "at your own risk", it is "at your own risk". I don't think they have legal recourse.
Right.
I'm going to encourage us all to remember, everything I have heard makes sense when I hear it. However, I know enough about law to know that isn't always the case. I also have done a little bit of, I was curious, I did some of my own research and I did just enough research to know I am not willing to touch that with a 12-foot pole because not even a 10, I would need longer than a 10, it's still longer than a 12 because it turns out golf ball, golf ball law is a thing and I certainly don't understand it.
Yeah.
So, I would, I hear your concern. I will, I mean, the board will do what it will do as we make motions. I will not be steering the... I will not be steering the board in the direction of making an advisement there because I think the odds of us getting it wrong are significant.
Fair, I hear you. I'm not recommending that we make the decision on the law. Just with the suggestion of the park at your own risk assumes, I guess changes the responsibility as it could be intended, so that's all.
Fair.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mary, if you want to speak, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. To the point of the cameras, I, Conservation Commission would definitely consider cameras be open to that if the town could budget it. And I'm, I'm interested in Chris's research and I can talk, I'm happy to talk to him offline because we have been looking for opportunities to have some better coverage, you know, particularly in areas where there has been, you know, reported use of side by sides and, and dirt bikes on the trails which are not allowed. Just in my research, what I have concluded, which may not be, you know, correct, but what I concluded is the, the cheapo ones usually don't give you the type of resolution that you would need to, you know, use as evidence in court. But anyway, I'm happy to take that offline with, with Chris. We definitely would be interested in it, you know, in this property if that's what the town wants to budget and support. And there are other, a lot of opportunities to help us get better, better safety in town properties from misuse types of conditions. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Other thoughts, questions, conjectures, processing from the board? Please.
I have a couple more. I have, I have a question about the distance from the road to the parking lot. How far is that distance?
About 120 feet.
120 feet? Okay. And then, has there any? I don't know our public areas that well. I live on the Lane, so there's one right nearby. And I don't see like a chain cutting off the entryway. Is that an option here? No, it's not an option to chain that area. Because I, I figured that would maybe stop the late night cars from going in there, but okay.
All right. Great.
As far as the surveillance goes, that's not something that I'd be interested in pursuing. I think that could identify, if, if there was a problem in the future, that could be, could be addressed at that point. The signs, is it fair to assume that there will be signs that indicate that the park is closed at dusk? Like most, do most parks have that?
No, I don't think the property is necessarily closed at dusk, at dusk, as we, as we heard from Ms. Wilson earlier. So let's clarify that. The town properties are usable any time of day, is that correct? Or I don't know the answer to this.
Mr. Chair, as.
Yep.
As a matter of the land use policy for conservation lands, they're not restricted in terms of usage.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. And Mr. Bowen, I do see your hand, but I'm gonna let the board do some of our work for a bit. I will be coming back out to you for public comment.
And the golf, the golf balls still aren't a primary concern of mine. Having, you know, a previous speaker had mentioned that you have never come across the, the golf balls in that area as they were, you know, working. But I do think the signs, some, some sort of signs putting the, the users of that property on notice just in case they do drive with their, you know, brand new car and see it could get hit by a golf ball, they may decide not to park there. So I think, I think a sign relative to golf balls, whether the wording or not, you know, could be worked on. But if there is a potential that they could be hit by a golf ball, I know I, I would appreciate, you know, making that informed decision. But, but overall, you know, I do appreciate the public comments. I mean, a lot of the concerns are clearly legitimate concerns. But as the chair had said earlier, there are also a lot of, a lot of benefits. I mean, anytime there's any kind of development, there's always going to be some downsides. And, you know, those, those residents that are either, you know, abutters or direct abutters have shared legitimate concerns. And I think there's a lot of benefit for, as again, as the chair had said, of airing those concerns. So all, all those involved can keep it in mind and work towards remedying them in, in the future. So is, is, you know, not predicting how the, the, the vote will go, but it really, it really is important for us to hear the concerns of the residents. And not just us, but just the, the public in, in general. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I am going to turn to Mr. Bowen for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. Just as a reminder on the sign.
I apologize, I'm gonna interrupt you. The sound is carrying a little poorly on our sound system tonight. So if you can just enunciate extra well, that would, I'm a little hard of hearing. That will be helpful for me.
Nope, that's fine. I can speak up. I've had to do this before.
Love it.
So it's fine. Can you hear me now? Everything good?
Yep, excellent.
Okay, John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. On the question of the legality of putting up signs saying park at your own risk, I don't know if everybody remembers, but down in the South Shore in Massachusetts in 2022, a homeowner who bought a property in, in the, in the golf course area sued for $5 million, the golf course, because golf balls were coming onto their property. Well, the Supreme Judicial Court overturned that $5 million award in 2022 that the court originally gave to the homeowner. So it said that they knew and were aware that they built their house next to a golf course and they knew and were aware that they bought it because it is a golf course. And as a result, the Supreme Judicial Court basically said, and you could run this by Adam Costa, the Supreme Judicial Court basically said, if the golf course was there and you build next to it, then you're responsible, not the golf course. And that's basically what that case was about. And that's just, is some insight. And that was a, I forget the name of the golf course, but it was, uh, let me see. It says, I will tell you right now, it's, it was the Kingston's verdict, it was a verdict in Kingston, Massachusetts, which basically resulted in they knew the risk when they built their house there or they bought their house there, that the family is, that the, the golf course cannot be responsible. So putting up a sign that says park at your own risk, I don't think that there is any, personally, from reading that case, that there's any real legal issue for the golf course to be covered by insurance. You know there's a golf course there, you parked your car there. Hopefully you have collision.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Pease, did you want to speak?
Uh, Bob, please, loving winner, winner green court again. This is a site plan review for a parking lot. You're supposed, in a site plan review, you're supposed to take and compare it to the standards in your regulations. And, you know, your decision is based on, does it meet the regulations? And I think you've gotten, I think this public hearing has gotten a little far afield of does this parking lot meet the standards in your regulations? Because I'm very confident that it does. So that's, I think you should focus.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna turn back to the board. I feel, I'm at the point that I feel like some signage for park at own risk is a nice, is a good thing to require for the sake of the people who would be parking there. Think applicant's probably gonna do it anyway, but conditioning it doesn't hurt. I mean, I don't, to me, this otherwise seems very straightforward. There are concerns. Some of them fall under the balance issue. Many haven't, some of the concerns I'm hearing haven't been an issue at similar parking lots in town for conservation land. So that's kind of where I land. I could see conditioning the at-risk. I don't see much need for anything else myself. I'm curious what others are though, because I like being disagreed with to the point that I come around.
Yeah, I don't even necessarily think it's, we'd have to require the signage. I think we're all reasonable people and if, if they, they think it's the best interest of them and their customers, they're, they're gonna do it. I don't, I don't think we need to condition it, particularly in the situation if it, it just simply isn't a problem, that they wouldn't need signs. So I, I think we can leave it to them to be, you know, responsible for their, their property.
We have received conflicting public comment to that point. We have received comment that the golf balls land there frequently. We have received comment that golf balls never land there. Probably a slight hyperbole in my description, not in the original statements. I don't want to cast dispersions upon, upon previous speakers. But we do have some conflicting comment there. I think I, I'm happy to require the signage as a condition because it's a very simple ad that can potentially eliminate one issue. And I also appreciate it because I'm gonna be honest. Speaking just as a person, not as a member of this board, reading about golf ball law, one of the reasons I stopped was it made me very mad. Because the number of times it's like, and if a golf ball hits your things, they're not at fault. I couldn't conceive of that being the case. Apparently it is. That's the law.
But you can keep the, you can keep the golf ball.
Oh, there you go. Hadn't thought about that, keep the golf ball.
It's, 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 sorry.
But, um, so I think I would even appreciate the signage in that kind of scenario because if I hadn't read up on this, I wouldn't know. It might be overstating a little, fairness, but I don't know. Do we feel, do we want more input on this or are we comfy with what we've heard?
I think Mr. Pease's statement was pretty indicative of this, that a lot of what we have going on here is not necessarily within our jurisdiction as the planning board. We have before us a site plan for us to review. According to our documentation and our requirements, the actual site plan itself appears to be in order and check the boxes that we required to check.
And that's why in, earlier I got to, we have that limited jurisdiction and this is a by right use. I do think it's important that those concerns be heard.
Sure.
And, but I do agree, I think we are limited on what we can do. All right. It's, please.
I had something, real quick.
No, go ahead.
Um, I am in agreement. I think everything makes sense. It looks good. My only caveat is, are, when they submit this, am I correct in saying that it goes to the police department for approval? Or to look at, to peruse, or is that a different?
Uh, yeah, no, when the initial application comes through in Open Gov, one of the workflow steps, there's a workflow step that's included for laundry list of departments. And I know that police and fire are included in that.
Okay.
It doesn't get distributed, you know, town, like fire department wide to every.
Sure.
Fire department person's inbox, but they have a designated approver who receives those applications. And if they find something in the application to us that is relevant, they'll comment on it there if needed or, um, yeah, that's generally the workflow that that takes. A lot of the times, they're just checked off and passed down, which we take to mean there is no comment on, on what was submitted initially.
So in, in this case, there was no comment on what was submitted initially?
Correct.
Okay, so we're just kind of going by the town council, no news is good news kind of thing?
Because they don't comment on every, because, because that.
They didn't see anything wrong, so they didn't say anything.
Which is understandable, but my only worry is, and again, this might be on the board's purview, which is fine, and I might be completely wrong on this. A lot of the issues that were brought up would be falling under the police department, late night parties, people being places they shouldn't be. I don't know if it's worth it to reach out to them and say, hey, these are the concerns that people have had. I don't know if that has any, anything to do with the approval of this.
I think that's a separate enforcement issue in this case. And again, the, the police, they know another parking lot was being, is being added here. Does each officer know?
No.
But does the police as a unit, as an organization, are they aware? Yes. They've chosen not to comment. And the difference between this and town council in, in our previous public hearing, to be frank, is it is established standard procedure that the police comment when there is an issue and do not do anything when there is no issue. And they've had this for months. That is different than us soliciting, saying, hey, town council, we want this feedback and then not getting it. We, we have to apply similar standard. But it is, to me at least, different.
Okay.
In terms of, this is an expected behavior. All right. If we're good then, I would have us look to, do we have a motion to? Call up the agenda. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan review for 994 Northfield Road?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is closed. Now we deliberate.
I think the only major deliberation or discussion we have is, in terms of like an addition to this, is do we require park at your own risk signage? And I am indifferent to it personally.
I am indifferent, I, I'm of the opinion that the applicant has said they're good with it. And if the applicant is good with it, I don't see a reason to not do it as a way of, I mean, if they're good with it, then why not, frankly? And I, like I said, I personally would, had I not done the reading I've done, I would be. I would appreciate it. Otherwise, this is, I can, I can see where the police may want to watch this more closely, but that isn't our jurisdiction. I can see how, that's not true. Let me rephrase. I hear the concerns that this could lead to increased trespassing. I don't know that I fully get it, but I don't need to get it. I know those concerns are there, but that's a, people shouldn't be trespassing. Trespassing is against the law. That should be addressed. But I don't see how this will notably change it. But if it does, that's an enforcement issue, again. I'm happy with just the increased, with just the increased or the additional signage requirement for park at own risk.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the approving, but again, it's certainly not a hill I'd die on. But I, I think we can just, good faith, trust them to handle the signage as appropriate. But again, I would, it's not a hill I'd die on.
All right. Anything else? We could have a motion to approve the site plan, to approve the site plan review for the plan of record for 994 Northfield Road with all standard conditions and the special, in a special condition of park at own risk signage.
Point of order, 994 rear.
Oh, thank you, oh, thank you. That was a point of order call for 994 rear? And yes, I would encourage, oh. And yes, I would encourage, oh, you know, I just thought of another, I don't, we closed the public hearing, so I don't know if we can hear from you. Can we hear from the applicant's engineer, even though we closed the public hearing?
You need to reopen it.
I need to reopen. Don't, not worth it? Okay, I'll accept.
Is, it, what steps have to go, have to be gone through to change the address?
I meant to ask that. I meant to be like, can we condition, get a new dang address for it, so?
The application itself does include the map and, the map number and parcel number, which in terms of just pure granularity.
Sure.
That is, that is enough.
But if you punch that into your GPS. Yeah, let, let me rephrase.
Oh, for the public's, like, clarity.
Yeah, so that when people go, oh, I want to go here, the mapping software will send them to the right place and after Settlers Crossing.
Right.
That, I wonder, I don't know enough about that process to know if it's easy and re, is that, is it reasonable for the app, can we condition the applicant as a, to?
The only, the only people that care about address or public safety.
What?
So they assign it. Otherwise, the identifier for property is a map and parcel. That's all the assessors care about it, that's all the registry cares about. They don't care about the address. That's arbitrarily assigned according to the convenience of public safety.
Is it considered a problem with public safety if, in the process of trying to get to this parking lot, you're being sent to the wrong location, which then creates a problem, both of that business, for the people who are being sent to the wrong location? Like, is there an argument there to say that it is?
Their software is a little more sophisticated than that.
Well, yeah.
From what I understand. It's up to you. It's up to the board. I'm not, you know, it's not worth debating to me, but, like...
If I put in 994, it does bring up Settlers Crossing. If I am using my phone to navigate to this parking lot, I'm not going to get to this parking lot.
Chair?
Yeah.
I, I think the same thing. I would, I would trust, the applicant, I think, can identify that this is a legitimate concern expressed by the owner of Settlers Crossing, and that they can work with the assessors to have their property assigned another address, so that very problem doesn't occur. I think they would have to work with the, the assessor's office, and I, they're on the same side, they're on the same team. I'm convinced they will work to resolution on that problem. They, the two parcels can't have such similar addresses, and if it can be corrected, I'm sure they will.
So I have faith in the conservation in CONCOM's ability and desire to do that. No, not a question to me. That's perfectly reasonable. I don't know if we need to encode it as a way, because I want the public, I want the people who've expressed concerns to know that we are, we see this as an identified issue that, we could condition around, I don't know if that's...
I have a point of order if I could.
Yeah, point of order, please. Point of order I can allow.
I'll speak generally not relating to this application.
Love it.
But generally speaking, in my opinion, a board cannot place an addition whereby we have to, we are obligated to get in approval from somebody else. You can condition that we petition, we make a petition, but you cannot condition the outcome.
That is a point I was actually going to get to. It, because, yes. And I was going to ask if we could condition their, I'll use the word petition, I think that's great, can we condition there that they petition to get?
I have no idea. You'd have to...
Well, you know what? I think we're going to do it and see what happens. If we're, if we're comfy with that, because I think that could, I get why there's an issue there, and, I mean, if they're told they can't, they can't. And, yeah, that's fair. All right. We could have a motion to approve the site plan review as per the plan of record for 994 Northfield Road with all standard conditions with... Rear. What's that?
Rear, 994.
994 rear. With all standard conditions, with two special conditions, one of which is that the applicant put up park at own risk signage due to proximity to the golf course. I don't think we have specified that, park at own risk signage, because, I mean, there's other reasons. And the other would be that the applicant petitioned to get the address changed so it is not apparently the same address to members of the public as Settlers Crossing Golf Course at 994, just 994 Northfield Road. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Are you guys going to move the sign?
I, so, that, that is not part of our purview.
I'm just curious.
So I, I'm going to finish this motion before I handle anything, because we're in the middle of a motion. I do hear you. All in favor of the motion as discussed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. We don't have any control, the question was if we're going to have the sign moved on Stagecoach Road that points towards a property. As planning board, we have no control over that. That's something you can bring to presumably CONCOM if it's their sign. I am going to move us on from this stop because the board has ruled, but...
A motion and second on that? I think I just...
Yes. Yes. Tim moved, I'm in a second. All right, I'm going to move us forward. May things be ever less controversial. 45 Lemmonster Shirley Road Site Plan Review. Oh, I'm sorry, no, this is a public hearing.
Yep.
And this is a new one. We do need to, I, I say that, I am wrong. I am out of order.
Give me a second, because it opens to OpenGov and it's not like actually...
Sorry about that. Yeah, should have meant to give you guys some advance warning on that.
Is it narrative?
Is public hearing notice not?
Yeah, public hearing notice, I have it if you want.
Hold on, wait, oh, I got it, hold on. Takes a little to open it. Okay, I have to download it. We're almost there.
It's got layers.
Okay, all right, here we go. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 24th, 2025, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for site plan approval pursuant to 250-413F of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg, as amended in Article 24 at the May 4th, 2024 Annual Town Meeting by Silo Electric LLC for installation of a battery energy storage system on an existing industrial concrete batch site. Subject property information, the location is 485 Lemmonster Shirley Road, Assessor's Map 143, parcel number nine. Owner is Lafarge North America Incorporated, 6211 Ann Arbor Road in Dundee, Michigan, 48131. You can view materials online at lunenburgma便portal openedgov.com search via an email request to the planning office, c. riley@lunenburgma.gov, or l o'connell@lunenburgma.gov, or in person at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Now please take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ryan McLaughlin. I represent Silo Electric, who is the developer of this project. Our landowner, our partner, is Lafarge, now Wholesome, which is the holding company of what used to be called Lafarge. And we would like to build a standalone battery energy storage site on, at 45 Lemmonster Shirley Road. We have been speaking to the Town of Lunenburg for over a year now, and worked with the town on the, on the zoning that was, that was ultimately passed, and believe that our project fits within that zoning code and, you know, will be a net positive for Commonwealth Massachusetts, Town of Lunenburg, and ultimately, kind of, you know, global humanity. The point of building battery energy storage facilities is to enable the continued decarbonization of the electric grid. It allows us to, to store energy that's produced by solar panels, wind farms, that sort of thing, and then to discharge that power when it's needed, like at nighttime or when the sun is not shining and the wind is not blowing. I've got Steve Glowacki here with RJ O'Connell, who's our site engineer, that can go through the details of the site plan. I also have plenty of materials that can talk about, I understand this is kind of a newer technology, so I'm happy to discuss any of the aspects of, of what the facility would be comprised of, or any of the details you'd like to get into.
For the record, Steve Glowacki with RJ O'Connell Associates. We are the civil engineers of the project, as Ryan pointed out. I'll touch very briefly on the site. To be quite honest, it's a very simple site with this equipment. The site itself, as you can see on the maps to my left, is approximately 6.57 acres, and it is bounded in the north by dense vegetation and a railroad spur, to the south by its access road, Lemmonster Shirley. And east, the densely vegetated area, and to the west by a large commercial distribution warehouse. The site's currently occupied by Industrial Materials Rail Loading Facility. Again, it is for concrete. And vehicular access provided from the south, from Lemmonster Shirley Road. The project itself is located within the OPI, the Office Park and Industrial Zoning District, and as such, with the recent legislate, with the recent bylaw change, it is a by right facility. The proposed project, if I may shift the maps. The proposed project includes the construction of a battery energy storage system, or a BES, if you will, the acronym, to the west side of the site. The area of interest for the project is about 13,000 square feet. However, the facility itself is under 5,000 square feet, or just about 5,000 square feet, and as such is considered a medium battery energy storage site, which again is, is allowed on this, on this use, allowed as, as a right by site plan approval through this, through the board. The BSS itself, BESS rather, itself is enclosed by a security fence. Enclosure is approximately 50 by 120 or so. The system is comprised of battery storage cabinets, associated electrical equipment, and a transformer that's set on concrete pads, while a balance of the site is a gravel, gravel area that's, that's used to navigate around that equipment. The project is designed to comply with all zoning regulations. We haven't made any changes to the site as such. There's no changes in terms of, in terms of habitable spaces or anything else, so it certainly doesn't add any additional parking requirements. The site itself will be served by electric poles coming off of the road, the main road, and feeds, feeds the system. As Ryan had mentioned, the, this system is fed and charged in non-peak times, peaked and then discharged at, I'm sorry, discharged at non-peak times, at peak times rather. From a traffic perspective, again, going by the bullet points in the bylaw, there's nothing really to be said of traffic. As a non, a non-habitable space, there's no increase in demand, parking demand. The circulation for the site is still maintained, as we cited the facility in such a way that circulation can still be maintained around that for emergency vehicles should the need In terms of the stormwater impacts, and again, just talking point by point for, for a site plan approval, the stormwater is essentially, does de minimis impact to this. There is currently an existing swale that sits just about where the battery facility is, and we intend to push that swale over to the east side and make it a bit larger so that it can accommodate additional flow should be. But the net increase of impervious area is 900 square feet. So again, it's de minimis in this, in this location. We have provided a stormwater, what I'll say, a minimal stormwater report to address those concerns, but as you can see, there really is no anticipated impact from this. The materials we submitted, we've addressed the site plan approval requirements. Happy to answer any questions, certainly as we get into it. Again, Ryan had mentioned, it's a rather unique, or a newer technology that a lot of people tend to have questions, and we're certainly happy to answer those.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to turn to the, I'm going to talk to the board and to the public at the same time for a little bit of background. About a year ago, we, the planning board did put forward the battery energy storage systems bylaw as a kind of a subset of a solar. And, and we did that because there were changes, details, but there were changes in interpretation of state law, and Silo came to us and said, paraphrasing, but rather than steamrolling you, why don't we work together and make a law that actually works for everybody? And that was great. It was a very positive experience. I'm going to turn to the board and say, if I end up accidentally steamrolling us, I need you to call me out on that, because I was in more meetings than most of us, because I was meeting with Silo and with Richard Harris, and then we'd kind of talk about it. Richard would do drafting, come back, we'd talk about it as a group. I may have more background info on some of it and just be making more assumptions, and don't let me do that if that's getting in your way, please. I believe this was the zoning, zoning article that went through a town meeting with a unanimous vote. Delightfully rare.
It was, wasn't it?
Yeah. Okay. So I'll turn to the board and say, we also have the report from Graves Engineering as well, that aside from pointing out that in one, in one missed instance, we are not counting, it is a very, Graves says, seems to say, I have no, you know, they have no issues, and they did not review the electrical aspects of it, because that is not their, that is not what site plan review, their peer review of it does, and that's not really what our site plan review does. All right. Initial questions or thoughts from the board? It's okay if you don't have any yet?
Well, I mean, if, from the engineering perspective, as Graves has signed off on it, then that's, that's what we've, we've asked them to do, is make sure that it meets the qualifications that we've set forward. That means it meets the qualifications that we've set forward.
We, as part of our bylaw, we do require feedback, they have to, before it gets to us.
Yeah.
It has to go to the police and fire department for public safety. So we have their files as well. The police department says they are very happy, they're fine with it as presented. Fire department has a couple notes dated January 6th. Fire department, need for liquid containment structures surrounded in the facility. Best components do not contain liquid to be concerned with. They have one requested change to the emergency plan, and that is, I'll turn to the applicant, and you've reached agreement with the fire department. Has that change already shown on the plans, or not yet?
Yes. Yes, I'm trying to remember exactly what it was.
As, I can get, as discussed in our phone conversation, the... As, I can get, as discussed in our phone conversation, the fire department will require the integral dried pipe deluge systems contained in the battery modules to be plumbed with a sufficient size piping to the exterior of the perimeter security fence. Said pipes shall be equipped with a four-inch stores type hose connection. Each module shall be numbered one to four, and said numbering shall be clearly visible from outside the security fence. Furthermore, fire department connections shall be clearly marked with the number corresponding to the unit it serves.
Correct, yeah, that's now reflected in the site plan.
I'm sorry?
That's now reflected.
Oh, I apologize. It has to be, yeah. I realize for the members of public, I apologize, I should remember to have a speaker.
Yeah, that comment was addressed, and it's now reflected in the site plan. It's on the west side of the drawing, of the most zoomed in drawing, are the stores pipes.
Other questions, thoughts from the board?
I had a question, but the letter of conformance to bylaw answered my question. I was wondering what the distance to, the minimum distance to a residence is, and they wrote in there that it's no less than 500 feet per our bylaw. So that's great. I wish every applicant did that because that helps me. So that's fine. I think the closest residence I saw was like 1,200 feet, so they're well within the distance. I remember the one big complaint we heard during the process was that they can emit some noise, not super loud noise, but obviously constant noise, so.
And we did also put in, in those instances where it could be near a residence, we did also put in decibel requirements as well in our bylaw. All right. I'll turn to our land use director. Were we missing anything here?
No, looks like they're ready to get approval.
Do we have additional questions? I hate to, I hate to say, are we going to open and close a public hearing on the same night?
Are we allowed to?
All right, if there's no questions, I don't want to push us too fast, but I would accept a motion to, make sure I get everything correct, to close the public hearing for 485 Lemmonster Shirley Road, site plan review.
So moved.
Second.
No additional, no discussion on that, right? I don't think so. I think this is, okay, great. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unsurprisingly, the people who helped us come up with a reasonable bylaw have reasonably followed that bylaw. It's, there are moments that industry and government can work together, and it's so nice when it goes well. Do we have further discussions, special conditions? I don't.
Uh-uh.
Glenn's got his thinking face on, I don't want to push him.
I got nothing.
Okay, yeah. All right. I would accept a motion to approve the site plan review for the plan of record on 994 Northfield Road.
Nope.
No, totally wrong, ignore me. Who, that would, yeah. I'm putting, let me fix this, I'm putting the checkmarks on a different spot than I usually do. There we go, now I'm going to read it right. Let's try that again. I would look for a motion to approve the site plan review for the plan of record for 485 Lemmonster Shirley Road with standard conditions. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Boom! Things never go quickly, I'll take it when it happens. Thank you so much.
And thank you, by the way, to staff who's been great in helping us with the decision through. Great.
That is wonderful to hear, and I will be sure to pass that along to the even higher the powers that be as well. Higher powers that be as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to get going right here.
Keep trying to write on my screen with a real pen and that.
It's going to get you one day.
Yeah. I hope I can take one errant mark, geez. 1523 Mass Ave, or Massachusetts Ave, common driveway special permit. Oh, we have to open this one too.
It's loading, hold on, we're getting there. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 24th, 2025, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, to hear and review an application for special permit, common driveway pursuant to 250-6.4C7 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg as amended at the November 14th, 2023, special town meeting by Procter Mass Ave Realty Trust for a construction of a single-family dwelling at 1523 Mass Ave utilizing an existing common driveway which currently services 1491, 1523, and 1529 Mass Ave. The subject property information, the location is 1491, 1523, 1529 Mass Ave, assessor's map, 63 parcel numbers, 3, 4, and 5. Owner is Procter Mass Ave Realty Trust at 1529 Mass Ave, Lunenburg, Mass, 01462. You can view the materials online at lunenburgma便的portals.open.gov/slash-search under Record PBSP251 via email request to the planning office, c. riley@lunenburgma.gov, or l o'connell at lunenburgma.gov, or in person at the planning office at 960 Mass Avenue in Lunenburg.
Take it away.
Thank you very much. Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. I'm representing the applicant this evening, which is, as you referenced, Procter Mass Ave Realty Trust. And just in the, as an aside, in the interest of full disclosure on this, this one's kind of a cool one for me because the Procter family, Dan Procter owned, currently owns these three lots. Dan's house is at 1529, it's the existing house, with, and we're using, proposing to utilize that driveway. But Ryan Procter, who is an employee of mine, you've seen him, is planning to build a house on this lot. So I'm here sort of representing Ryan, and, you know, it means a lot to me to be able to do that, and for him to trust me to do that. So he asked me to step into his place here, but he's certainly capable of doing it himself, but he wanted to sort of have some separation there, I think, and not represent his own interests. But we're here, as you said, to request a special permit for a common driveway. Just a little bit of history, as I said, the, there's an existing house today at, I got to get the addresses right, 1529 Mass Ave. There's an existing paved driveway, the lighter gray hatch that you see, it comes in off of Mass Ave, there's a circular driveway that goes to 1529, which is the existing house. And then if you, if you bear left, the pavement continues across the thin strip, which is a reduced frontage lot, which is 1491. And then on to the property, which is known as 1523. The applicant is looking to build a house on 1523, and historically, there was a house on that property, which is why the driveway extends onto that property. I think back in the 2000 timeframe, the house was moved to a completely different piece of property. But the pool, in fact, that you can see in blue, and the gray behind the pool, which is a sports court, remains. So that's all leftover from when that, that property was historically used as a, as a single-family residential structure. So, in fact, although the use as a common driveway has lapsed technically, or perhaps because there's no more house there, it has historically been used as a, in a shared capacity. But be that as it may, we did submit a form of intent to the building commissioner to make sure that we went through all the proper permitting procedures, and this was one of them, that we needed to get, request a special permit from your board pursuant to new regulations. So we have prepared a fairly detailed narrative in our application package, which, which goes through all the provisions of your regulations, the, which is section, as you read, section 250-6.4C7, which is your new-ish common driveway regulations that were promulgated about a year and a half ago at town meeting. And we went right down through and each one, why we believe we comply, with the exception of three waivers, and I wanted to go over, I wanted to focus my attention on those. Your regulations require a minimum pavement width of 18 feet. As I mentioned, this is an existing driveway that's been used that way for quite some time, and so we're proposing to utilize that, effectively with one caveat, effectively with its current width from Mass Ave into the site where it splits to the last house. With a notable exception, all of these things, by the way, were reviewed onsite by the fire department, so we dare ask you for these waivers because it's a pre-existing condition, and we reviewed it directly with the, with the fire chief onsite.
Oh, fire chief was?
Yes. Fire chief was okay with this, yeah. But that's sort of an aside, but he did ask us, relative to the width, to add, you can see the dark gray right on the left as you're going into the site, he did ask us to widen the entrance, so we are proposing to do that, and that's, you know, directly pursuant to the fire chief's, fire department's requests. Second thing we're asking for is that your regulation requires that the longitudinal grade, so centerline grade, be not any steeper than 2% within 75, 75 feet of the street right away. We're asking for that, to utilize the existing grades, which is slightly steeper than the 2%. Again, reviewed that onsite with the fire chief, and there were no concerns with that. And third, all common driveways will be rounded at a street intersection or cut back to provide a curb radius of not less than 30 feet. This, this relates to the roundings. We're trying not to reinvent the wheel. Again, we dare, we dare ask for this because we've talked to the fire chief. He asked, again, that we add that additional width to mitigate for this concern, but trying not to, you know, reinvent the wheel on an existing curb cut that's been there for, for quite some time. So we're asking for those three things that have all been reviewed by the, the fire department, and that's it. With all other respects, we believe we comply with your common driveway regulations. Just, the only other point that I wanted to note is there are wetlands on the property, and there is a application before the Conservation Commission, a notice of intent that was filed that I think is going to be heard next week, if I'm not mistaken, so that's a, a parallel process. And a board of health permit, there's a proposed septic system, there's an existing septic system that was there, but we're redoing it for current compliance, we're not utilizing the old system. So new soil testing was done, and witnessed by the board of health, a septic permit was applied for. I don't think it's been issued, but I think they've reviewed it once, so we're, we're down the road there, so. With that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Great. I appreciate you giving the full explanation because I admit, when I first looked at it, my first thought was, come on, three waivers?
Yeah.
What's fire going to think?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We didn't dare ask you without going.
No, I appreciate that.
And, and also that it's, it's one of those funny situations where it's, it's a, I get that your regulations changed after the use sort of lapses a common driveway, but it's been a common driveway in access.
Semi-pre-existing, semi-not.
One of those odd cases.
Yeah, yeah, understood. All right. I'll turn to the board. Do we have any questions? Or concerns? I mean, I've given my opinion, but the applicant is asking for three waivers. We're not obligated to give those.
The department that those waivers most affect have signed off on them, so I don't see there being an issue with granting them.
I am going to turn now for public comment. I know what the answer is going to be, there's no public, oh, there is, oh my goodness.
I'm just curious to learn. I live nearby.
Okay.
I can see it from my experience of opposition.
And there's no one in Zoom, it looks like. So we have no public comment, but I did want to be thorough, as we must. Other questions or questions, comments from the board?
So there is an existing house that's using the driveway?
Correct, yeah, it's.
So those, yeah. So I mean, I think that lends added credence to the waivers.
And in the past, there were two houses using.
Right.
All right. If there's no other.
Motion to close public hearing for 1523 Massachusetts Avenue Common Driveway Special Provision.
I'll second, but I just had a question before I second. They're still waiting on conservation. Should we make our determination before we hear back from conservation, or does it not?
That's totally cool because they, if conservation says this doesn't work for some reason, they still can't do it.
Perfect, second.
Yeah, then they'll come back to us, but. Yeah, in this case, if I may.
Yeah, please.
In this case, we thought about that. Sometimes we think that the risk is significant enough that changes might be made, that might require significant enough changes to want to keep it open. In this case, we do not believe that's the case. If for some reason something happens, we'll come back and ask you for an amendment, but we, you know, if you're comfortable closing it, we'd like you to do that tonight.
Okay, can I ask you a fresh motion, so I feel like we all are in agreement about what we're talking about? I don't mind your inter, that was a very important question.
Motion to close hearing for 1523 Massachusetts Avenue Common Driveway Special Provision.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now you don't get to tell us anything. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I like it. It works. We have rules, but this one was written, so things could be altered if needed, and they talked to the right people. Right? I would entertain a motion to approve the special permit for 1523 Mass, oh, sorry, this, yeah, to approve the special permit as, for common driveway as per the plan of record for 1523 Mass Ave with standard conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Bang-a-rang.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, everybody, it is nine o'clock at night, and we have finished public hearings. We had a bunch tonight, and there were some controversial ones, well, one, but I'm glad we got through it. Great, I'm going to go back into the agendas. Add another checkmark, because that makes me happy. We have decisions to go over, is that correct?
There, I think, are two remaining?
Two, okay, I see four there, but.
Two of them, I believe.
We are, yeah, yep.
Absorbed.
Absorbed. So which two do we still have to look at?
Looks like 558 Goodrich and 255 Sunny Hill.
Okay, and those should be in our.
Yes. Got the physical copies here. They were part of the email we were sent last week.
They were part of the email we were sent last week. Oh, no, sorry.
Or in the decisions folder. I don't know. Yep. I see things there, so we're looking at. 558, 560 Goodrich, and Sun, Goodrich and Sunny Hill. Okay.
Okay, decision.
Where's the decisions folder again?
On the left side, over here. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it shows up a little differently on the Chromebooks on my Windows.
I believe the, the special permit one, because 560 Goodrich had two, there was the special permit for the common driveway, and then there was the stormwater.
It was just the stormwater we had to look at, yeah. You're right. Thank you. And we wanted to do this because we wanted the additional, yeah.
There we go.
This decision shall be recorded with the registry of deeds. So I see the registry of deeds in there, and yeah, I think we are. Does, I'm looking at Goodrich. I don't know if others are looking at Goodrich. Okay. Stormwater management. I think this reflects our discussions now?
As far as I'm, I can recall, yes.
And we don't, Mr. Landry's director, we do not need to vote, but we've already voted this, so we just need to sign if we're good, right? Or, yeah, okay. Wonderful. Are we good signing, or do people want to review 560 some more?
Ready to sign.
Okay. This is two copies stapled. Like, I think we're hitting each page twice, which isn't, is fine. Do you need two copies signed?
Um, depends, as long as there's one set of signatures.
Okay.
Once, relates to the one thing, that'll be good for the town clerk.
Okay. This is just non-coalated. It's like 112233. So I don't know if you needed us to sign twice so we could recoalate.
There's another one over here.
Sounds like no. Um, Logan, do you need? Yes.
The.
Because that was.
Oh, yes, yep.
That will have to go into the public record.
Thank you. I will scan and file that tomorrow.
And sign Goodrich.
And 255 is here whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'm looking for the language in here about recorded with the deed, and I must not. Again, nine o'clock at night as well, within my pumpkin zone.
I think I'm going to add that to my vernacular.
A lot of my friends use it. It's the same as you'll often, when people are talking, see me touch my nose, and I realize that means nothing outside of a specific social circle in, where that is the official non-verbal, like, because in that group in meetings, you touch your, like, touching your nose is a silent way of saying, I agree with the speaker.
Uh, see, for my group of people, it's not it. Like, no, I'm not responsible for that.
Oh, no, see, not it's the forehead, it's more obvious that way. I don't know. See? I tell people I agree and not have to do anything at the same time. Sounds great. Okay. I believe this also meets.
Yeah.
Our prior discussions? Wow.
They're just doing stuff.
I feel like we finally cleared a lot off our docket.
Yeah.
Okay, this goes to you. We have no certificates of completion tonight. Great. Board discussion, ADU and floodplain bylaws and standard operating procedures. Chris, I'd invite you in to speak. Well, I know there's been some more changes in everything that just came through, correct?
Yeah, I just.
I think, I think we'll have to have you at a microphone, so folks at home can hear you too.
I went down here.
Yeah, oh, we can bring that one down.
It's, that one's wireless. You can just grab it.
I was going to say that.
No, that one can go to you.
This microphone's wireless, so we can take it.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Noticed halfway through, I'm like, why is the, why is this thing shaking? Oh, it's my legs.
I wasn't going to say anything on it.
I'm sorry. My dad gets on me about it all the time.
No problem. I am not allowed, for most of my life, that has been a severe habit, so I am not allowed to criticize because that is the pot calling the kettle a cooking instrument.
So the changes the town council made or suggested, they're very, they're somewhat luminous, but they're very minor. So, some editorial edits, nothing substantive, I think, needs to be changed or needs your review or, or adjustment. So, just clean that language up. I don't even know if I really have to clean it up that much, but we'll get the track right, get it finalized. I guess the warrant's going out to print on the 7th, April 7th, from what I hear. So, everything's open until April 1st, that's no joke, and I'll get the, the language cleaned up for the warrant by the end of the week.
Uh, we need to have public hearings on these, correct?
Yeah, but that's down the road a little bit, so we want to do that, we have to do it before our town meeting.
Okay.
We should advertise that for second meeting in April.
All right.
So we have time to do it.
I love it. Can we get it for the first meeting in April, or is that not?
That would be at this point.
I know, this.
I don't think we have enough.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, yeah, I just want to make.
You can have it irregularly scheduled, if for whatever reason, I can't imagine what it would be, but if you, you know, had boards schedule special irregular meetings to kind of fine-tune and change things if needed, but we know on the ADU side, they issued the model bylaw two weeks ago, finally. And so, everything leading up was this moving target, and we, you know, this degree of uncertainty. Then they issued the model bylaw, and that's what town council, if you read his comments, that's what he's based it on. He took ours, just mentioned a few things, a few edits we need to make, and we're all.
Okay.
And I also sent, and I passed this by the building commissioner, he didn't have anything. He said, these are minor, and fine. So, I also passed the ground water or floodplain.
Yep.
Bylaw by Katie, Katie Page, you remember her, she gave us the presentation from DCR. She had no comment, so we're all set there.
Great. And actually, for the edification of the board, I thought it was very nice. Chris and I went and presented this to the select board, and it was, I thought, very nice. Mr. Alonso echoed our sentiments about, wouldn't it be lovely if we could actually do the work we've been trying to do for the town, rather than spending our time regurgitating and trying to work through and around top-down things from the state, where we effectively don't have any control, and if we don't, maybe that's where it should come from. Because I went to them and said, told you the next thing we're going to work on was solar, and here we are. Still isn't solar. But yeah, unsurprisingly, select board was like, okay. Do we have anything else on this tonight, or are we good right now? I mean, as good as we're going to be with top-down?
I did have a question about the ADU.
Yeah.
I heard conflicting information on how many ADUs could be on the property. Do you know? I think you've said there could be more than one. Like, I've watched other.
I think the state has said there could be more than one. But any additional one that, that isn't, you're allowed one so-called protected use ADU.
And the rest of.
You can't require a special permit for that, you can't, it's, there's a thing called Dover Amendment, and so when you, the word protected is used, that refers to statute and so-called Dover Amendment, which is protected uses that you really can't regulate under local zoning. Educational uses, religious uses, childcare uses, things like that, group homes. So, these are protected uses, and they've included this.
For one.
And then beyond that, you can require a special permit for another one on, on your lots. You know, the yield could be theoretically, in some scenarios, four units on one single-family lot, but let's just say right now, this is all about by right, state-mandated, protected use ADUs. One on a lot pretty much anywhere where you want it.
May I see if I understand this correctly, based on our discussions? If, the, I think, and Chris, interrupt me if I'm wrong. Part of the weirdness is, if you already have an ADU on your property, okay? If you already, not, not want one, if you already have one properly permitted, and everything else done correctly, the state bylaw lets you put a protected, basically, the state bylaw lets you add one protected ADU. Even if you already have one ADU, you can add a protected ADU, and then going forward, they're going to be protected ADUs. So, there could be a scenario where someone gets a special, gets a second ADU without a special permit if they already have a fully permitted ADU. Now, if they use this to put a ADU on their property, that's their protected ADU. They automatically get another one, that's when it's a special permit. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Nice.
And that was a huge hang-up for me wrapping my mind around, so. So, yeah, there is a scenario where someone could have a duplex on their property, because duplexes are by right, and could, if someone in Lunenburg already has a duplex, and already has a protected, a regular ADU, they could add one more under the state law and have their nice little village of four dwelling units on their acre. That isn't a typical use case, and I don't even know if we have any of those right now, but that is a theoretical thing, and the state has clearly been okay with it. All right. Let's move on then, if we're good. Do we have standard operating procedures in us tonight? If people want to push, I'll push, but it's 9:17, and I'm okay moving that off, because I think we're doing okay right now. Chris, is there anything there you need us to look at tonight? Because if you're going to say, dudes, this is really critical, we can make the push.
No, I think we're all in the same mindset or boat of, we've got three sets of standard conditions, we've got some additional conditions we've put in that have satisfied recent concerns. Those are what we're going to use for site plan review, common driveway, and stormwater management, special permits going forward.
And if we encounter something, we can go back, we can redo those, and that's perfectly doable. But right now, it seems like we're working okay. And then if not, we can just say, Matt, this isn't, we found, have an issue, and we'll go back in, because we can change operating procedures, that's the thing.
We still need a comprehensive review of that. I'll give you an example that happened tonight, the de minimis issue. If you look at our standard operating procedures that are currently in effect, the most recent ones that the planning board approved, it talks about the criteria by which a project is determined to be de minimis. And the project that was before the board tonight did not meet any of those criteria. So, still your authority, and if you deny something for a determination of de minimis, then necessarily we go to a public hearing with a full application under site plan review. Would be a modification, and that requires section four site plan review, full submission, all the submission requirements. But this is an example of something we should tighten up.
All right, excellent. And hopefully, with some of these longer, multi-stage public hearings behind us, we'll have a little more flexibility. All right. Is there anything super mission-critical in abiding in community notices? Putting up giant factories, mega.
Nope, nope.
Love it.
Yep, just other communities dredging through the same states.
Yep. Okay, committee reports, master plan steering committee.
We haven't had a meeting since our last time we've met. I'm gently harassing some people for responses to make sure I can have another meeting. Yeah.
Okay, and I know Rami has sent you an email on that as well.
Yes.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Okay, super. We'll keep that chugging away. Open space committee.
We have not met since our last meeting, so we have one coming up in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Municipal Building Design Committee, Mr. Allison is not here tonight. Capital, well, here no longer tonight, Capital Planning Committee. We did meet last week on Thursday after FinCom, after Finance Committee. Just so the town manager could go over the recommendations she received from Mr. Tarazany, the interim town manager who did work with Capital Planning Committee. I was glad that meeting happened, because I think it both helped educate our new town manager about our capital planning process, as well as reveal there may, not all paperwork seemed to get from the interim town manager to our current town manager as nicely as we might like. Certainly not holding anyone here now accountable for that, and, but regardless, there was some, like, oh, that wasn't what we recommended, that we, you know, sussed it all out, got it all together. you know, sussed it all out, got it all together." But yeah, that, the Capital Planning Committee continues to want to be more capital planning, less capital ranking. We didn't get as far as we want with that this year, but the goal is to keep moving, and we'll see who our next chair is, moving that forward. Economic Development Committee.
Also have not met.
Okay. Stormwater Task Force.
We met last week. Things are continuing to progress pretty well. We're continuing to drill down on fee structures, getting an idea of what people are gonna be paying, how we're going to assess fees, how we're gonna communicate those. We are going to have a very brief presentation at the next town meeting, just to kind of introduce everybody to the concept that this is something we're working on over the next year, something that they can expect and talk about, and everything else that they'll need.
All right. Monticic Regional Planning Commission.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Monticic Joint Transportation Committee.
We did meet. Mostly, we talked about budgetary things. They're trying to rework certain projects because of budgetary concerns. The project I mentioned that is for Lunenburg, for the Mass Ave between Electric Avenue and Chase Road, that's not even, like, dated yet, so we don't have to worry about them doing that study anytime soon. It'll probably be at least five years before they do that.
All right. Minutes approval for March 10th?
That's a lie.
Okay.
But, next meeting.
Got it. Meeting schedule, as a reminder, we meet at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, unless we say otherwise. This meeting, this week, our meeting began at 5:30, so we could accommodate executive session first, and still get the meeting going around standard time for our public hearings. Upcoming meetings include April 14th and April 28th. Public comment, there is no public. Board comment concerns. Y'all are a bunch of troopers. It's my comment, I appreciate it.
Oh, could I actually make a super quick comment as public?
Never, huh? Yes, go ahead.
I was just thinking about it with the, like, 994 Northfield concerns and the, you know, the dumping and all that. It made me think about tools like C Click Fix that other communities have used. That tool specifically was bought up by, like, the company that we host our website through recently, but just general things like that, where it's as easy and frictionless as possible for someone in the public to say, "Hey, here's an issue, here's a picture of the issue, and here's pretty precisely where it's at," from, you know, my phone or wherever, and getting that info to whoever it would be, whether it's DPW, or I... that's just beyond my knowledge, you know, where that gets handled. But just, I don't know what the state of, like, 3-1-1 services that we have in town are, so if that is something that's bugging you and something you're interested in being resolved sooner, I would definitely, you know, bring that up at the relevant venues, select board for sure.
Yeah. Thank you. I would only add that I get it 100%. Dumping's always weird, because we... dumping's awful. First of all, let me just say, dumping is... What kind of trash do you have to be to leave your trash for other people to deal with? To be real frank, not trying to be kind about it. What kind of so-and-so? But it is often the idea of, "Oh, dumping is the town issue." Well, it is on town land. The stuff that gets dropped at the corner of Northfield and Highland, well, that's usually me, because my corner's where it gets dropped. And that's the thing, is it is a landowner's responsibility, too, in that whoever the landowner is, it stinks. People shouldn't do it, and if you have done it...
Feel bad about it, please.
And, okay. Board comments concerns? None. I would accept a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Aye. We out. Lunenburg, thank you for another lovely week. We'll see you here in two weeks, or three weeks, whatever, on the 14th. Three weeks. See you here in three weeks.